Okay, we're good, we're ready to go.
Okay, are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest? Counselor Bowman.
I, Ryan Bowman, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Report Number 15-440, 15-441. As an employee of Utilities Kingston, it may be perceived that I have a pecuniary interest. Thank you.
Thank you, that noted. Are there any other disclosures of potential pecuniary interests? Okay, seeing none. We have no delegations this evening, so we will move right to the 2016 budget introduction. So our CIO, Gerard Hunt, will start things off.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, members of council, members of the public and staff members. It's great to be able to present the budget. I wanted to start out by thanking council for the direction that they set when, back in April, when we set the strategic priorities. Much easier to have a group of objectives that we can focus on, as well as some parameters. So that was all part and parcel of the exercise that we went through. And at that time, we committed to bringing your budget within the parameters that had been set. So tonight, we will talk a little bit about how that budget lines up with the strategic priorities of council, how those fit into the budget. And then, as we go through the next few presentations, commissioners will, and Utilities Kingston will identify the areas that they are focused on within the budget for 2016, and we'll talk a little bit about future years as well. So in the back of your report, there's a listing of the specific priorities, including the six main priorities, and then sub-bullets of outcomes under those. And that shows a tick mark in the boxes that has been considered as part of this budget. You'll also see in that where there are ongoing efforts. That means that either there was already some approval, or some activity that has been approved going forward already in 2016. And where there are no tick marks or no words ongoing, it means that we still have to do some scoping review, probably in the committee of the whole format. And we anticipate that in 2017, 2018, we'll be budgeting specifically for that. Now, many of the tick marks that are in 2016 will go on for a number of years. And so it's important that we use this as a guide and continue to report on it. So each of them, I'll go through the six of them here, but this is essentially what's in the appendix on your report, Exhibit C, I believe it is. Before I go too far, I'd just like to acknowledge the work of the Finance Department. Most of the analyst members and the management is sitting on the, to my right over here. So they provide support work to the organization. And I just want to say thank you for an outstanding job. Thanks. Of course, that goes without saying that we couldn't bring a consolidated budget to this table if we didn't have the cooperation and vision of the directors and management and leadership in the organization to the commissioners. So I'd like to pass on that compliments as well. A little bit about the numbers. So this does not include Utilities Kingston, and it does not include capital, but about $348 million total operating budget. The total non-tax revenues, which includes grants and fees and charges and recoveries and all of those sorts of things, total about $124 million in the budget. Payments in lieu of taxes, which is the taxation that's paid by federal and provincial levels of government, about $15.4 million. Assessment growth at $1 million this year. Normally, that's in the range of about $1.5 to $1.8 million. But 2015 has been a tough year for building permits and for some development. Some development typically would get on the assessment roll, has been in OMB hearings and other places. So as those things take time to work through the process, it also impacts on the revenue that shows up. So not only did we start with a gap a year ago of $1.3 million, the fact that our assessment growth revenues did not materialize where we estimated them a year ago, it meant we were actually starting with a gap of about $1.8. And I'll talk to you about how we solved that problem for you this year. So total taxation, about $270, $277.7 million. And that's 1% for capital and 1.5% basically for inflation and other in order to arrive at your target of 2.5%. How did we close that particular gap? Well, we had departments and finance working through to very closely tighten and scrutinize the material supplies and contracted services lines and saved about $450,000 there from the projections from a year ago. We had fuel price reductions from those projections of about $900,000. So as you know, the market for fuels has substantially decreased from where it was a year ago. And in fact, a year ago, we were even predicting that it would go higher. So the treasurer will talk to you about what's estimated now. We have savings for insurance, and again, that's from the projections. And we are doing some, I would call it more focused risk analysis in terms of trying to mitigate potential areas of risk, including how we handle claims, how we deal with slips and falls on sidewalks and things like that. That's going to be an ongoing program for the next couple of years until we were able to get that to the best we can make it. And so this year, we can see about a quarter of a million dollar savings. We have additional grants of about $700,000, and that's primarily to do with social assistance, where the province obviously pays a substantial share of that. And as the, this is an upload, so as the upload continues, that we've talked to you about a number of times, and as the caseload changes a bit, we are seeing the benefit of that. On the other side, however, you're seeing the costs because you only get a share of the grants relative to the cost. We have the $500,000 assessment growth that I talked to you about a few seconds ago. And we have some reductions in fees and charges, and in particular, investment income. We used to budget about $1.3 to $1.4 million for, to get interest on our short-term investments, if you will. But because interest rates are so low and continue to be, continue in a downward direction, or at least a stable direction, we don't anticipate being able to get that other level of income. And our provincial offenses is estimated to be lower, as well as the transit fares, particularly as a result of some of the free passes for more students has reduced the revenue projections that we had as a result of council's direction on that particular policy. So the income statement basically looks like this, all rolled up. Taxation revenue, PIL revenues, fees and charges, grants, federal grants, recoveries from other municipalities, and transfers from reserve funds. And on the salary and wage side, and Desiree will go through many of these, salaries, wages and benefits as an example, the base salaries are going up less than 2%, about 1.7%. There is some expansion, additional people being hired in transit to continue with the phasing in of the transit service that was part of the previous direction. Some winter control staffing, which was brought in an information report about three weeks ago to the EITP. And I think a position or two in culture, but it's fairly minimal, but it does increase the cost for salaries, wages and benefits up from the base of 1.7 to 2.8. I'll just leave that slide up there for a second, just so that you can get your bearings. If the numbers are in brackets on the expenditure side, it means the expect, the budget for, estimates for 2016 are lower than that for 2015. And the treasurer will go through some of that, and then your commissioners and others will go through that when we get to external agencies. Now, from an internal service provision perspective, we use about $124 million, $125 million worth of taxes to pay for the services that are managed by the Corporation of the City of Kingston. So all of the various departments. So that is seeing an increase of approximately 1.8% in total. And you can see some are going up and some are going down, most notably in public works. It's going up for solid waste, additional root costs there, and also going up in public works for snow plowing. And we're going to use those staff resources to be able to augment our work on parks and pathways in the summer. Community services going down. You'll see Commissioner Hurd will talk about some reductions from the original projections in Rito Crest, which is another good sign. We continue to see additional revenues in, from the way we manage the services there from provincial grants, primarily in that area. We do have some pressures, however, in some of those particular departments, and she'll talk to you about that. Under transportation facilities and emergency services, that really is impacted primarily from the transit program. And you'll see a little bit under the facilities management, where we're trying to move more to, into a maintenance of assets perspective. Finance, technology and administration, primarily driven there. For open government type work, more engagement and technology. Technology is supporting many, many of our services to a greater extent. And as we look into future years, assessments that we've made in technology, whether they be for the DASH, the information, or the financial management system, they will yield return of investments in terms of efficiencies and productivity improvements. And we anticipate that part of the savings that we will in 2017 and 2018 will come as a result of the implementation of those systems. Very quick slide with respect to the agencies and boards. As you know, you passed a motion directing myself and the mayor to have a chat with the agencies and boards, and also directing members of your own council, when they represent on agencies and boards, to carry the message of a 2.5% tax increase, which was essentially 1.5. We've always had really good cooperation from a leadership and management perspective with the agencies and boards over the last several years. And again, that was the case this year. In all cases, they really worked hard to try to fit within the envelope that we had asked them to, although in some cases, it was difficult. And you'll hear from them on how that was unsuccessful in a couple of areas, including Fairmont Home from the County of Frohneck. And then the last slide, which is kind of the catch-all for the budget, but primarily this is where the amount of 1% gets increased on taxes and then gets transferred for capital purposes. And you can see that on the second line here, which shows that it's going up by $2.5 million, which is equivalent to a taxation increase plus the PIL increase generally, plus inflation on that particular balance. On the tax adjustments exemption and fiscal services area, this is where we have to budget for the impact of things like your Brownfields program or DC exemptions when those apply under the policy. For the most part, they're staying fairly level, only $600,000 change this year. But you know, as more and more actions come on, it does put pressure because it doesn't always translate into new assessment growth. So staff continue to monitor that in an effective way, not wanting to shut down business, but at the same time, wanting to make sure that we do get the fiscal solutions that we need as part of the overall budget strategies. So I'll skip this slide, I just talked about it. The tax rate increase of 2.5% and growth at a half, which is about $1 million. On the capital side, we have $69.6 million. Again, it doesn't include Utilities Kingston, but, and it doesn't include the four-year infrastructure program that would come via the engineering department, which was approved last year. So it's primarily the other service areas. In this budget, there's about $24.3 million worth of debt. We are reducing our dependence on debt after a number of years of having to use debt as part of the overall major financing strategy as we crawled out of the fact that we didn't have enough funds accumulated to be able to spend on the capital requirements that we needed, but we're slowly getting there. A few of the capital projects that are on your list for discussion and deliberation, the airport expansion, that includes both the runway expansion and the terminal building. Commissioner Legge will talk about that. The central library branch renovations, a year ago, when the library board were talking about this with you and with us, they were thinking they would do that over three or four years. We worked with them in the last three or four months and determined that it just wasn't feasible to try to do a project of that nature in three or four years. It would mean that the library would have to be shut down, or at least portions of it would need to be shut down, which just didn't make any sense. There is some vacant buildings on the main street that maybe could house a storefront or a library front for a period of time as a temporary location. And our people have put this on the priority list, managed this project for the library. Remember, for library purposes, the city owns the buildings. And so we need to see this as part of our facility asset base. We have parking garage maintenance, which you've heard a little bit about a couple of weeks ago, $4 million. K&amp;P Trail at 3.6, recently recommended to EITP and approved. Additional transit buses of $2.3 million. In fact, this is a little different. The treasurer talked to you about it's a little different than what was in your budget because in the last few days, we've determined that the best path forward would be to bring the three buses that were identified in 2017, 18 and 19, as those particular years, pull them all into 2016 so that we can get approval for them all, so Ms. Kidd can actually order them this December, because it takes about nine months to get a bus. And he's going to go on to augment the service on, I think it is, or what is it, Sheila? On the 500 bus, express bus. Right now, it's running at about 15 minute service, and we think at that point, it should go to 10. Okay, so that's, that's good news. And I think that, you know, that was a difficult discussion, trying to figure out like how you would manage, how you would do that and still try to maintain service levels in all other areas, but we believe we can do that within the budget that's here. And as a result of that, are happy to make that change, and Desiree has some information for you on that. Affordable housing investment at $2 million. This is the last year of a five-year program, which was $1 million for capital and $1 million for land acquisition, which was then going to be a revolving fund. And Commissioner Hurd will talk to you about that. We have a client relationship management system that you heard as part of the open government, which has been on our books to replace our customer service call center system. And this one will feed service orders to a number of different departments that we don't now, and also integrate with many of the other automated systems that we have. And the design of the Kingston East Community Center in this budget with the construction contemplated for the 2017 budget. A few projects on the horizon for future years, just so that you, just so that you know that they're out there, and we'll be continuing to work with them as we try to figure out what the federal provincial government can do and maybe pull some of this stuff forward. But final design and final land purchases for the Third Crossing in 2017. The East Community Center in 2018. The fleet maintenance garage, that's at 701 Division Street. If anybody's been over there, some of the equipment nowadays, you can't put it on a hoist, or you can't even jack it up with a, with a, with a jack. It has to be worked on outside. The equipment is just way bigger than the facility, and the facility has been around for about 60 years, so it's time to replace it. We've had to move it a little bit in the last couple of years due to some, some concerns with the site, trying to figure out, you know, how we can do all of the things in the future in a concentrated area, and at the same time, in order to free up financial capacity for a few other things in order to stay within our targets. Fire training center, it's still need business plans, still needs to come to council to get some, some direction on it. But if it was to be in a budget, it would likely be 2017. You know that we're doing an EA for the downtown transfer point. Once that's finished, we'll be talking about what that means. And Breakwater Park was postponed actually a little, a few months ago in order to accumulate some funding to, and when I say funding, not only capacity, financial capacity, but just staff capacity to deliver on, on many of the things that are in these budgets, hands in the works in progress, which is also attached in your, in your book. So this is a chart that many of you have seen in the past. It's something we'd like you to etch in your mind. That top line is what the province says we can probably borrow if we put all of the, all of the numbers in the right boxes, and that's the mathematical calculation. Our treasurer's a little more conservative, and I mean that respectfully. She would like to see us stay closer to about $400,000 and go up from there based on, based on inflation trends. And so what that means is that in the years 2018, 2019, 20 and 21, you know that we have a water plant and a sewer plant, and we have John Connor Boulevard. Some of those big projects had all packaged up together. But in those years, from a class flow perspective, we're going to bounce a little bit over top of those lines, and we're going to come back down. And this include our share of the Third Crossing and those major projects as we get out into 2022 and 23 and 24. So it does, you know, everything has been built in here that we can foresee in order to, in order to take, take that new direction on the curve. And Standard and Poor are very comfortable with these estimates. But we want to send a signal that we don't want to see them moving much. This is an important slide. It's part, it's, it's something, Part Four, it's schedule Exhibit D, Part Four in your binder. But what's important here is it just gives you a snapshot of four years. It shows the 2015 approved budget, and then it shows you the four years. And you can see basically the percentages of all departments. If you look in 2016, you can see that some departments are going up and some departments are going down. The corporate and strategic initiatives departments primarily are coming in in 2016 at zero. And it's like any bank account, you have to have the ability for some departments to go up and others to hold the line simply because you only have so many dollars go around. And I can say that, that there, that there is no animosity in the organization between departments and/or commissioners when it comes to helping their colleagues out in this regard, and I think outstanding teamwork. So I did simply want to go to the next slide. So the next slide basically is the thumb of this particular slide. And what I want to talk to you about is the three circles that are in, that are in this slide and on that particular sheet that we were showing you a few minutes ago. What this means right now is that based on the projections, knowing what your parameters are, based on the projections that we have right today, we would need to find approximately $1.3 million in 2017 in order to bring you a 2.5% budget. And that's assuming all the same standards, service level standards that we have. And it's assuming that the external agencies can continue to help and stay within those parameters. So if service levels were to change over the course of the next year substantially or in any way, you would, that number would increase. Now, the interesting thing about this number is that the next number in the next year, the next circle, it's cumulative. So if you found, if we were able collectively to find the $1.3 million in 2013, or sorry, boy, I'm dating myself, in 2017, then in 2018, we would have the difference to find, if you know what I mean. So you'd be looking for $800,000. In the following year, you'd be looking for $900,000. So, so we wanted to show you this simply because it's a works in progress. We're all in this together. Staff can't do this without you. And we know that periodically, we will get comments from members of council, well, let's just spend the money, who cares what the tax rate is? Well, that's a council decision. If you want to give us different direction, we'd be happy to take it. We believe though, that from the diligent analysis and financial reviews on a regular and ongoing basis, that we will continue to shave costs out of our area. And it may very well be that we have to make some tough decisions collectively, like, you know, do we keep all facilities that we have, or do we keep all land that we have, like all of those sorts of things? Or perhaps, can we have faster assessment growth and things of that sort? So we're not going to contemplate those things today, but that's the way that you can actually influence the budget. We do believe that inflation will stay in the range of 2% for the foreseeable future. And we also believe that tax rates will continue to be low. So those are the, those are the numbers in those years. And Mr. Mayor, that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So with that, we will move to Utilities Kingston presentation. And as everyone knows, there's a tradition that we have at Budget Time is to give a special award to the commissioner that comes in with the shortest presentation, so. So I will be taking close notes. All right, we have our official timer. No pressure.
Thank you, Your Worship. For those of you who recall last year, I probably finished last in the competition for shortest presentation. And for those of you who know me well, not that I like to sit around and talk a lot, but my presentation last year, and I'll make this comment now, but it applies as well to the Public Works presentation, really focused on our four-year capital plan, and then talk about the operating as well. And this year, since we had the four-year plan in place, of which we have one year under our belt, which I think we've been successful in, I have really very few comments about capital and will, and will focus on the operating. And I would say with the, and really, I think this applies to both budgets, the UK and the public works, but particularly with the UK budget. This is a pretty basic budget. If you look at the overall increases, it's a little bit under 2%. No significant projects or whatnot, and just kind of business as usual. So I just want to make those comments upfront. So what I'm, in this presentation is, or I'm looking at talking about is the, are the three symbols in the middle of this, the gas, the water and the sewer budgets. The strict budgets and the rates follows a different process. As far as the rates for the electric go, we have actually, my fingers crossed, I think just completed our, our process at the Interior Energy Board, where we are looking for a five-year approval of our electric rates on a go-forward basis. We think we've, we've got that behind us, with rates to be implemented in January of next year, and then follow through for the next, next five years. It is the Interior Energy Board that has the final say on electric rates, not, not city council. And those rates are very focused on capital work, and it's about a 3.5% increase per year on a go-forward basis. The operating expenses there for the next five years, we are tied down to under 2% increase for operating expenses. So as I said, we're tonight looking at the wastewater, natural gas and the appliance rental business. These are city-owned businesses that are run by Utilities Kingston. And as always, the, the budget process follows that of the municipal budgets. The slide that I've got here looks at some of the principles that we adopted at Utilities Kingston back in 1998 during the amalgamation process. And then we also reaffirmed them in 2000 when we went through incorporation. There's a couple of things on here, and I'm highlighting them because these were done back over 10, 15 years ago, but I think very clearly supports the, the direction of the council priority setting, and I'm going to talk a little bit in detail as we go through. And the two are the best customer service delivery model, because one of the items that council focused that council focused on, um, during your priority setting session was customer service, and the maximum coordination for development and infrastructure review, uh, renewal, which I'll talk a little bit about under those items. So again, last year, uh, we approved the capital budgets for the municipal utilities and also the rates for the water and wastewater we put in place at that time. We did not, uh, approve the, uh, the local distribution part of the natural gas rates because, um, that varies a bit from year to year, and, uh, one of the things that we will not be looking for this year is any increase to our portion of the natural gas distribution right yet. We'll stay as it is. The commodity fluctuates up and down with the market, but there will be no changes to the, uh, to the, uh, portion that, uh, we control. Again, just quickly looking at the capital budgets that were approved last year, uh, for the four years, a total value of 215 million dollars, and you will notice, um, under 2016 for the wastewater, um, a spike there, and that is for a sewage treatment plant that we hope to tender in 2016 that will, uh, service the west part of the, uh, municipality, but will also assist with, uh, some pipe changes that we're making on intensification work, uh, that we are looking at, um, uh, taking on over the next little while. Um, the other item, just to note, that, um, is underway this year, and, uh, the, the picture on the cover of, uh, the UK budgets is a picture of the, uh, water treatment plant that we are currently building, also in behind the Invista, and that is, uh, coming very close to completion. A very successful project and, uh, hope to have the grand opening for that, uh, sometime early to mid, uh, 2016. So as I said, um, as there are no significant projects that we're talking about, one of the things that we are, uh, doing at Utilities Kingston is looking very closely at the priorities of council and seeing what we can do to assist, uh, the municipality in achieving them. So what I've noted on the first slide is just the six priorities, and then highlighted on this slide are the five of the six that, uh, we at Utilities Kingston are focusing on and, and assisting, uh, council in achieving these. And I'm going to look at, uh, each one and just talk a little bit in detail about them. And again, this is really the focus of my presentation tonight. As I said, there's nothing significantly different about this budget, so we're not going to get into, uh, any of the details of it. So one of the first items that council looked at was to create a smart economy, and there are a couple of ways that, uh, Utilities Kingston, that we will assist, um, uh, the municipality in achieving this. Both of these are through our fiber optic network. Um, the, uh, the promotion of Wi-Fi in the, uh, report that came to city council back a couple of meetings ago, that, um, uh, CAO Hunt and I, uh, were fairly involved in authoring. We looked at how the municipality could expand Wi-Fi and really focusing on where it has its, in its buildings and facilities and sort of growing out from that. The second one is promote fiber access to strengthen Kingston's competitive advantage. So Utilities Kingston does run a very extensive fiber network, uh, for the municipality. You own it through Utilities Kingston. We have over a hundred customers, uh, currently. We have the city of Kingston pretty much blanketed with fiber. One of the things that we have done to this point is done it relatively silently. We haven't really promoted ourselves, and, uh, to, uh, assist the municipality in achieving this direction, that is one thing that we want to ramp up over the, uh, three-year term of, uh, of council. At the end of the day, we have this business, uh, to really assist other businesses, to help them grow and to provide a return back to the municipality. The next one is invest in infrastructure. No surprise, I mean, at the end of the day, that is what we do at Utilities Kingston, is manage some pretty significant, uh, infrastructure for you. Three areas that, uh, we pulled out of, uh, the, uh, council priority setting session that I just wanted to touch on. The first one, maintain, improve roadways and sidewalks. So you may think, well, what at Utilities Kingston can you do to assist in that? We don't build roads. We don't assist, uh, in building sidewalks. But if I go back to the principles we talked about, and one of the main things was coordinating, uh, projects, particularly on the infrastructure, we try very hard for the work that we do at Utilities Kingston and the work that takes place at Public Works, making sure that, um, it is done in coordination so, uh, one group is not, uh, is not, is not doing work without the other knowing, so we can coordinate projects. And I bring this up here because I think, uh, council is very aware that we do that for the large capital projects. I think we have demonstrated extremely well that we do that, but it's not necessarily just on the large capital projects. It's on some of the smaller day-to-day things that we do that, and we want to continue, uh, to promote. Complete the John Connor Boulevard, uh, not a huge amount of work for us at Utilities Kingston to do in that regard, but there are some electric lines and, uh, other infrastructure that we have to relocate and, uh, work with the contractor on that project. And they continue to support the current infrastructure plan and recommendations, uh, and recommend continued support to fu- future council. So really what that is, as I talked at the start, um, the four-year plan that was approved last year, continuing on, making sure that, uh, we, uh, we complete the projects and also already starting to look at, uh, the types of projects that we want to include, uh, in the next four-year plan, which will come up, uh, I guess, three years from now. So this, this is always a focus for what we do at UK and at Public Works. Planable city, uh, foster intensification in the city core, and this, this has become a key element for us at Utilities Kingston. Um, you know, I, I think there has been a change from looking at just strictly the greenfields projects when it comes to running water pipes, sewer pipes, uh, more so looking what we can do in the, uh, the central part of the city. I talked about the water plants and the sewer plants, even though they were in the west end, they do play a key role in helping to support intensification, particularly the sewer plant with some of the pipe work that, uh, we're planning on doing that was, uh, was talked about last year. One of the points that I want to make, um, on this slide, you know, we have done, uh, this is the third multi-year plan that we are working on. If I go back to the first one that we're involved with, we looked at sort of the key infrastructure components. What's the road surface like? Uh, what are the sidewalks like? What's the state of the water pipes, the sewer pipes? Are we experiencing, uh, sewer backups, uh, you know, spills into the harbor and whatnot? And they were really the drivers. And it's interesting when the last, uh, four-year plan that we went through, how, they still are the drivers, but, uh, uh, the, uh, the support of development, the working with Commissioner Hurdles Group from the Planning Department, really is as important as any of the other ones, and I think that shows, uh, how we've adapted, and this very much supports, uh, the direction of council. Advance a vibrant waterfront. There were no particular items, um, uh, from the, uh, council planning session that stuck out that we are supporting, but I think just generally, this is an area at Utilities Kingston that we continue to support. You know, you look at the, uh, the services that we provide, particularly along water and wastewater, protecting the environment, uh, particularly the, uh, the, uh, the water environment has always been a key issue for that. I talked a little bit about, uh, the work that we've done on the overflows. You know, if you look now, today, at the amount of overflows that take place when we get the heavy rainfalls, um, the snow melts compared to what it was back 15 years, we have come miles, we still have an immense amount of work to do, and that is something that we continue to focus on. And, you know, when we talk about greening the city, the comment that I have made quite frequently is that Utilities Kingston, yeah, we're concerned about, uh, greening the community. It's important to us. But for us, bluing the committee, looking at the, at the beautiful waterways that we have around here is every bit as much as important as greening the community. So I think this is, this continues to be a key, uh, area of concern for us. The final one, uh, foster and open government, build on, uh, culture of excellence and customer service. I go back to the principles that we adopted back in 98 and reaffirmed in 2000. The best customer service delivery model is one of the items that we had there, and this again is something that we want to continue to work on. That's not saying that some of the other items, uh, that was listed under the, uh, the open government isn't important to us, but I think this is a key one. So looking at the numbers, um, uh, and generally what we look at is sort of the bottom line because we, uh, we manage, um, these businesses really the most effective way we can, and as a result of that, sometimes, um, the split shift between, uh, the different utilities. So at the bottom line, you can see very little change in our operating budgets, uh, from year to year. Now, one of the, uh, one of the, uh, factors in that is the, uh, the master plans that we worked on last year and will continue to work on this year. Uh, that has helped us out a bit, but if you look at, uh, if you take them out and you look at the numbers in your budgets, I think we are about 1.9% year over year from the actual work that, uh, that, that we perform in delivering these services. So we are, uh, adhering to the, uh, the guidelines that council has provided, uh, to us and others. Couple of closing remarks, uh, just a couple of general things. We are an appliance rental business. We run an appliance rental business. It's a competitive business. The money that we make from that, we return back to the municipality. And on this, we try to maintain our rates just so that, uh, I would say we are comfortably below others in the business, um, so it, uh, it continues to help us grow. There are some increases in that, uh, so that we try to drive the maximum return whilst staying very competitive. The miscellaneous charges, there were a few charges that, um, uh, a few changes that we made to them that are, uh, indicated in the report. Again, things significant. I think in a couple, we've gone from, um, hourly charges to some flat rate charges. And a couple of other notes I just, uh, bear with me for a second, I wanted to make on this. I, um, I already mentioned the gas rate. We are not looking at any increases to, uh, uh, the city portion of the, uh, of the gas rate charged. And, uh, the other thing, although I didn't touch on this, I know it's, uh, it's always of importance to council, we run a number of, um, very successful conservation programs, uh, on the electric side and also on the, uh, the water side, which assists, uh, in the wastewater as well. It is our intention to continue on with them as we have in the past. I said they've been quite successful. We actually have a number of staff members dedicated to that, and, uh, and that will basically run as it has. So that's the end of my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
That's great. Thank you. Are there any questions? Case, uh, Councilor Sanic.
Thank you, your worship. Um, Mr. Keach, so for this year, it's 1.98%, and then it says for next year, it could be more substantial increase because of the Point Pleasant, there are going to be increased costs possibly. Do you think that would be more like, um, 3% or what type of increase? Any idea what it might be next year?
So, um, actually, thank you for answering that, asking that question, because I was supposed, I was going to touch on that, and I, um, I forgot, but yeah, that's, um, uh, that's true. We, as I said, we are very near to the completion of the, uh, the water treatment plant. The increases to that will impact, um, the, uh, the water utility. My guess is it, you might see on that particular, uh, business with our utility, a 3% or 4% increase as a result of that. We, um, um, we just, we wanted to make note of it. What we will try to do is to see are there other areas that we possibly, uh, see some savings in to reduce the impact of that, but, uh, it, it will on that, uh, push, push the operating cost. These are big plants. They take a lot of, uh, energy. I know the, uh, the one plant, I think it's like a million dollars in electricity cost. Uh, the capacity of this plant is close to doubling, so I, I would hate to guess right now, but probably an additional 3% on the water, I would guess.
Councilor Neal.
Yes, just quickly, I wish I had a meeting just before this meeting, so I apologize for not asking a couple of these, uh, questions in advance. Um, I appreciate the fact that both operating and capital are fully funded not by taxpayers but by ratepayers, who are also taxpayers, but, uh, but my, I'm curious as to the fact that on several of these, uh, budgets, um, there's almost the equivalent of the operating costs for a year that are going into a capital reserve. And I know that when we, um, have the semi-annual shareholders meetings, we get some of that information about the size of those reserves and how they are, are being expanded or allocated, uh, but I didn't see it in this particular document. Is it possible in future to share that information so that we can answer those questions, uh, as to why, uh, some of those reserve funds are so large?
So the answer to that is yes, and we, we, um, I'm just sort of scratching my head to, to remember what we provided in, in this handout. I know last year, uh, when we did the, uh, capital presentation, I think we provided detailed information of that. Um, I mean, that's something that we can, um, make available to council, uh, later, um, during this process. The, the, the quick response to that is those reserves are there to fund the capital work that we have planned. So as I said, on the water side, we are currently in the process of a, I think a roughly an 80 million dollar expenditure for the water plant, similar expenditure for the, uh, wastewater plant that we are looking at starting for, uh, for next year. So they, they are for capital projects. We have looked out at least 10, I think, 15, 20 years, uh, with, uh, capital budgets, requirements, uh, rate increases, uh, funding, and we're trying to maintain, uh, the funds at a level to, uh, to basically pay for that work but not be too high. But yeah, we, uh, if it's not, need to go back and look, if it's not here, we, we can provide that. There's no problem.
And if I could just-
Sorry, Councilor Neal. CAO Hunt just wanted to make a comment.
Oh, sure. Just to supplement Mr. Mayor, uh, Mr. Keach's answer, under the tab, reserve funds in your binder, those reserve funds are shown there. They're 15-year models. They show how the money goes in and how the money is accumulating over time. The utilities, particularly water and sewer, are very capital-intensive systems. We have relied heavily on debt over the early going in our 15-year plans to be able to build the infrastructure and actually replace and rehabilitate some of the existing infrastructure. However, as we move forward, as Mr. Keach has said, the rates will contribute both operating and capital dollars that we are in a situation where we move away from relying on debt and more into pay-as-you-go funding. So, uh, all the information is in here. You just may not have got far enough back into the binder.
Thank you. I, um, did get through the utilities binder. I didn't get all the way through the other binder, but I will for tomorrow night. My other question is, I know in the past we've been very competitive, our near neighbor, uh, utilities for both electricity and natural gas, do we continue to have some competitive advantage or, uh, near parity with our, those competitor, uh, companies, whether it's Hydro One or, uh, or Union Gas?
The, the quick answer is yes. On the Union Gas, we try to say, so I'm talking our portion of the rates, uh, we try to stay either just under or at, uh, the same as what they are. On, on the Hydro One, I would say that we have significantly better rates than what they do. And, and again, um, I think Mr. Murphy has detailed information on that if we want to go another level deeper.
Thank you. And we all hear almost weekly in a newspaper on the news about oil prices, but our natural gas pr- prices, I know they spiked there for a while. Do we forecast them to be, uh, kind of level out or to be better in the near future?
I'm going to ask, um, Mr. Murphy. He, he is responsible for purchasing and managing the gas portfolio, so he could-
Thank you.
Through you, your worship. Um, we go through an extensive, um, three, three-year planning exercise to purchase our natural gas. It's a council-approved policy that's been in place, I think, since about 2009. And, um, so we, we're continually buying gas, not at any particular point in time, but as we go for, and we go out three years. And the current, uh, the latest projections we, we do have is that the natural gas prices are expected to stay relatively stable to what they are now.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Councilor McLaren.
Thank you. Uh, looking at these balance sheets, I'm very happy to see that, um, the appliance rental business, for example, uh, has net earnings almost three times its operating costs. So there seems to be, and you mentioned that this is a competitive market, so there must be huge barriers to entry, and I imagine if it's a competitive market, there must also be a few other competitors out there. I'm wondering if you have any strategies to increase the market share because this is non-tax revenue in the purest form that could reduce the need to increase future taxes?
So the, um, again, the quick answer to that is, uh, yes, it's something that we have tried to grow gradually over the last number of years. I think in trying to go sort of between five, five to 10% per year, and that's sort of the, uh, the growth scenario that we are looking at on a go-forward basis. As you said, it's, um, um, there are some barriers to getting this, obviously. Uh, we've got a good customer base. Uh, I think two things we want to make sure we don't lose the customer base, and we have had some, um, some struggles with, in the past with, uh, people going around knocking on doors and necessarily using, um, a sales pitch. Uh, so, so that's something that we, we try to guard against, uh, and we, uh, we do try to grow the business, uh, both from trying to convert, uh, customers that exist today and, uh, getting into, uh, I'll call it the greenfields market from, from that business. It doesn't necessarily mean greenfields development, but it has, um, you know, um, homes, apartments and that are built, working with the, those developers to get our tanks in, you know. So yeah, it's something that we continually try to, uh, to focus on. We think there is some room for, uh, for growth, so sort of a modest five to 10% per year for the next few years.
Five to 10% is awesome, considering we only want to increase taxes by 2.5. That's great. I hope, I hope you're successful.
Thank you.
Councilor Hutchinson.
Just wanted to follow up on a couple of questions that Councilor Neal asked. If we're, if our electrical rates, if I heard you correctly, are better than Ontario Hydro's, um, how is, if they supply all electricity, how is that possible? I presume we're on the same grid. I presume we're on the same grid eventually and they're supplying electricity, but their rates are still higher. Is that a function of their more expensive infrastructure or, or their management model?
It's, um, I'm struggling with how to answer a relatively complex question in a, in a short period of time. Um, so when I say, when I say our rates are comparable with Hydro One's rates, I'm talking about the distribution portion of the rates. So it's, it's the money that we collect for the, the wires, the poles, the meter reading, the sending the bills, that type of stuff. And I'm not talking about the transmission portion of the rates or the energy portion of the rates and then all of the other things that the government adds on top of that. Our portion is about, um, I think 22, 23%. Um, so, so that's what I'm talking about. So the fact that Hydro One provides us with the energy, that's in the transmission, so we pay Hydro One a transmission cost for that. The actual energy, although, um, uh, OPG or Bruce Power, uh, depending on how you want to look at it, or today, anybody with solar panels or whatnot can generate, it really is a, is a complete separate portion. So really, we're just focusing on what we call the LDC, the local distribution company portion, so about the, you know, in round numbers, say 25 cents of the bill. Uh, so on that portion, we are very, uh, very competitive. We would be significantly less, and I'm not sure if, Randy, if you, if you wouldn't know the, uh, actual percentage that we would be on that. Actually, I'll give you a minute, I'll, I'll answer the rest of the question. So, um, my take is why we are lower on that is really a number of reasons. One, we are a smaller company, I would say we're more efficient. Um, if you want to look at things such as labor rates, uh, the, the rates that our line guys get paid compared to Hydro One's line guys is significantly different. Um, and then there are a number of things that, uh, like I could, uh, continue to talk on. Um, as far as actual infrastructure, I think they have old, it's some older infrastructure. We have some older, they have some newer, uh, as well, but I, I think it's more corporate issues that, that drives that. I don't know, Randy, if you can, uh, talk on sort of more exact the differential.
Through you, your worship. So a customer in Kingston Hydro's territory over the course of the year will pay approximately $1,550 per year on their total bill. A customer in the west and east part of the city will pay approximately $1,940 per year. So the difference is almost $400 per year.
Well, we know what we did, tried to do legally a few years ago and why, and that underlines that statement. Um, it's, uh, this is not, not an academic exercise. People are concerned of electricity rates, as you well know, and, uh, it's becoming more difficult for portions of the population to pay. So that was part of the reason, or the main reason for asking the question and just understanding what you might say to them. Um, the other question had to do with the gas as just being just at or just below the private gas, the local private gas utility. Is this pricing, a way of pricing, a way of measuring the market and are, or are lower prices possible? So do we set our prices, of course, according to costs, of course, to cover them, but do we then look at what the pricing in the, in the private market is and say, okay, we can safely raise it since we need the capital money? I'm just wondering how we come to our prices.
So, so the way we come in, at a very, very high level, the way we determine our portion of the gas rates, and, and our portion of the gas rates is similar to what I said with the electric rates. It's, it's for the local distribution costs, so the per round, the meters that we have, um, the, uh, the city gate station where we take, uh, gas from TransCanada system. So it's that part. It's not the cost of TransCanada or, now, TransCanada has some competitors now, not the cost of getting it to us either from Alberta or from, or from the States, or it's not actually the cost of the molecules. And it, it again is around 20 to 20, 25%. So that, that's what, that's the part of the bill we're talking about. So our, our rates are made up of looking at what it costs us to run the system, to administer the system, what it costs for capital improvements today or, or going forward, um, you know, similar to the water and wastewater. But then as well, you do get a return, the municipality gets a return, uh, gas business as, as you should, because every, every other, um, gas company runs these as a, a competitor for profit business. So it's those three things. We try to make sure that we, um, we can do that while not being any more expensive than Union Gas. So that's, that's sort of the drivers behind it, um, at this, at this point. I'm not sure I answered your question, but that's, that's what we look at in, in recommending a rate increase to counsel. And, um, I'm not, I think we're fairly close to what Union's rate is or, or either just a bit under or just at Union's rate, which is why we're not here looking, uh, for an increase this evening.
That's fine, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other questions, thank you, Mr. Keach.
If I could just make, I wonder, if I can go back to the question, um, I'm not sure I completely answered it, and I think Mr. Hunt's, um, what he added to it was good. So looking at the reserve funds and the, the rates and whatnot, the, the comment that I would, would like to make, uh, is the water and wastewater rates, so the increases that were approved last year, I should probably have touched on for this year. For the wastewater, I might not have this exact, but it's pretty close. It's about 5% and the wall's 3%. The next two years of your term, I think they're all at 3%. And counsel may recall, particularly a counsel that's here for some time, we've had some fairly significant increases in wastewater rates. We have got rates now to a point on a go-forward basis, uh, that they are basically in the 3% range, so sort of inflation and a little bit more, uh, a little bit for capital projects going forward. And I think that that has been a really, really good achievement of the past councils, that we have been able to, um, get the rates to the level that basically they're self-supportive of the capital work. And the capital work we're talking about these businesses is in the range of $10 million a year. That's not counting any, uh, significant plants or whatnot. So I, so I, we're, we're basically, I think, there on a go-forward basis, um, and the reserve funds and whatnot support that. So just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Great, thank you. Counsel Hutchinson.
Sorry, just on that note, if someone were to ask me what, how much the electricity rate was going up this year, and sometimes I've seen estimates in the paper and sometimes you don't, what would I say? So, I mean, what I got from that is we've managed to, over the years, plus decade or so, smooth the rates out so that they're going up in a more smooth trajectory, which sounds good to me. Correct me if I'm wrong about that, but just in terms of, if someone asked me that simple question, how much are the rates going up, what would I say this year?
So, so my comment about the go-forward, the, the around 3%, that was for the water and the wastewater, of which you have 100% control over, complete control over. On the gas, um, you know, we see them about inflation on your portion of the bill, the commodity, the transportation, whatnot, is, is controlled by others. On the electricity, I, I know that for the next five years, our portion, so the 22, 23% of the bill will be going up 3, 3.5%. The rest of the bill, um, I'm not exactly sure, and the, the main increases on your electric bills over the years have not been on our portion. They have been on the, um, uh, on the commodity and on the other add-ons that the, uh, uh, that the, um, province controls. And it's been, I would guess, maybe triple what our portion of the bill has gone.
Counsel Neil.
Sorry, just a quick follow-up. Um, if I remember the EITP report from some months ago, um, the 3% stabilization, that's for residential, but the IC, uh, portion, uh, may be slightly higher, is that accurate?
Um, yes, so if, if, so when I, when I'm speaking rate increases for water and wastewater, I'm talking our revenue increases. And yes, you're correct that, uh, actually it was back at budget time last year, we're trying to get the right, um, uh, the right balance. So the residential customers pay their costs, the other customers pay their costs. So if we actually look at for this year, although, um, it's, the revenue increases are 5 and 3%, the impact on the residential customer is about 2.5%, maybe a little bit more than that, and, and more so on the other customers.
Thank you very much. That's what I had recalled. Thank you.
Okay, so we will move directly into deliberations then for, uh, approval of the municipal utilities operating capital budgets. So first is item A, approval of the 2016 operating and capital budgets for the municipal utilities. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Counsel Neil, seconded by Counsel Shell. So any discussion? Okay, so we will call the vote on item A. Item B is the approval of rate changes for the 2016 for miscellaneous charges and the appliance rental business. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Counsel Holland, seconded by Counsel Alum. Okay, moving on to the municipal operating and capital budget overview. Ms. Kennedy, City Treasurer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think my boss stole a little bit of my thunder here tonight already, doing a little bit of an overview, but, uh, he kept saying Desiree's going to provide you with details. So hopefully I've got the details in this presentation. And I'm going to stay at a corporate level. Um, so you may have heard some of this from CAO Hunt, you're going to hear it from me, uh, from a corporate level, and then you will still hear some of it tomorrow from, uh, the commissioners as they get into the details of, of each of their areas. Um, and hopefully we are consistent and tell you the same thing by the time we're done. Um, so in terms of the 2016 operating budget, just at a glance, so we do have a municipal tax increase, um, uh, as directed by counsel, 2.5% included in the numbers. Uh, just to confirm, because I have been asked a couple of times, we are maintaining the frontline service levels, so there's no decrease at all in terms of service levels for any of the areas. Uh, we have assumed 2% for inflation, and I'm going to give you a little bit of, um, background in terms of some of our assumptions for inflation and some of the other economic factors. Uh, we've incorporated about half a percent for increased service demands and enhancements, and you'll certainly hear more details about this from the commissioners tomorrow night. Uh, we did have the annualization of the express transit phase two and the Princess Street corridor, which were in the 2015 budgets, started partway through the year, so we've had, had to pick up the remainder of that. We've got some additional cultural plan investment, which you'll hear from Commissioner Beach tomorrow night on, um, particularly the public art initiative is, is one of those things that, that's in the budget this year to start. Um, and we've got some growth demand in winter control and park maintenance that we have built into the numbers. Included in that is also the 1% incremental capital levy. Uh, and then offset by, as, as Mr. Hunt said earlier, half a percent for assessment growth. We had projected back in January, assessment growth of about 1.5 million, um, and it's come in at about $1 million. And 0.5% in net savings and efficiencies. So if you do up the math with your calculator, it should come up to the, the 2.5%. So I just wanted to go through some of the assumptions that we've used in the budget this year. Uh, we, we always take a look at CPI to see where we sit. Um, CPI for Ontario, all items included for October was 0.9%. Um, it was in December when we were doing the January budgets, uh, for the 2015 budgets, it was at 1.9. But I've also included below there just some, some, uh, statistics on gas and on energy as well. Um, and you'll see that's really what's driving the numbers. Gas has, uh, gone down 19.5%. Um, which includes natural gas, electricity and, and some other factors within that as well as the gasoline category, um, minus 10.4. So if I pull those out, you can see we're closer to around the 2%. So CPI excluding gasoline is 1.9. CPI excluding the whole energy, uh, component is 2.1. So you'll see, and, and I will talk a little bit about what we've done, particularly with our gas and diesel and our utilities, which are two major categories, expense categories for us. Um, you'll see what we've done in terms of those specifically, and then the remainder is roughly around the 2%. Um, 2% is also where Bank of Canada targets in terms of kind of their, their desired level for CPI, and so their policies tend to focus on, on, uh, bringing the, uh, um, the target up to around the 2% for, for CPI. Uh, we also do follow some of the, uh, the bank's economic outlook information that, uh, that comes to us periodically. Um, and TD in particular, uh, their outlook for 2016 is CPI around the 1.9%. So a couple of other things that, uh, we've considered, so the gas prices, and I'll talk about this in a minute, uh, but in terms of what we are seeing in some of the projections, uh, the projection is that the prices are going to be slow to recover, to start going back up. So good news when you're filling up the tank and good news for us from a budget standpoint. Um, and projecting perhaps a slight increase in 2016, but not really expect anything major happening before 2017 and past 2016, definitely a little more risky and a little bit more unknown. Um, on interest rates, uh, our operating revenues are reflecting short-term rates, which are projected to stay low. We're not expecting any large spikes or, or quick spikes in the interest rates in 2016. Um, and that will be reflected in our investment income that's in our, uh, our operating budget projections. Long-term rates are projected to have a slight increase. Uh, we continue to monitor this particularly for our long-term debt. So, uh, because we do a lot of our borrowing structure Ontario, we have some excellent terms with them, and one of the things that we have the ability to do is to lock in rates fairly quickly. So if, for instance, we did see a spike happening in our longer-term rates, we can act on that fairly quickly. Um, we do have in certain cases, even on our larger projects, the ability to borrow before we've actually finished spending the money and finished the project, um, which is not something that's always available to municipalities, but our, our debt rating certainly helps us in that regard and gives us that bit of flexibility. The other one that I don't think we talked about last year, but we certainly are, are dealing with this year, is the Canadian dollar. And that definitely had some effects in terms of our projections and in terms of what we have built into both our operating and our capital budgets. Um, we are expected, and, and because of, particularly on the capital side, we've got a couple of projects that, uh, are very sensitive to the US dollar, that, that we're paying out in US dollars for. Uh, we've kept a close eye on this, uh, for municipal projects as well as for utility projects. And we're expecting that the Canadian dollar is going to continue to weaken, um, throughout 2016, and then a slow recovery later on in 2016. So as I said, that's causing pressures in, in the operating. Uh, you will see it certainly in some of our, uh, software support and maintenance support contracts that are in American dollars. Uh, and in capital, our financial management system, actually our consultants are from the state, so our consulting portion of that project is paid in American dollars. Um, and we have some equipment through, I believe it's the sewer plant that is in, uh, in American dollars. So we're keeping a very close eye on this. We did actually purchase some American dollars, um, probably a few months ago now in anticipation of this, and we're actually looking at that and working with the bank. We talked to them last week about potentially doing this again in the next full of months in terms of, so it, it all depends on the timing of that as well as the timing of when we need to, have to actually pay the money. So in terms of the operating budget, as Mr. Hunt, uh, opened with tonight, we have a total taxation revenue of $2 million, and that's made up of a 2.5% tax increase as well as $1 million in assessment growth. So in terms of operating budget revenues, we split this into a couple of categories, uh, and this is a report, though I think in your report, we may have rolled a couple of the smaller amounts up a little bit differently, but it, it's, uh, fairly consistent with what's in the report, and, and these are the categories that I just want to touch base on tonight. You can see basically fairly consistent across the, uh, the categories. Um, the blue obviously is the, uh, the taxation revenue, and that represents the 2.5%. Um, and some increase in the government grants, uh, increases in the fees and charges, but not to the extent that we had initially projected, and so we've got some challenges there. Uh, slight increase in the PIL revenues, and then a bit of a decrease in the transfer from our reserves and reserve funds. And then a bit of a decrease in the transfer from our reserves and reserve funds that we're bringing back into the operating budget. So just going through those briefly. The payments in lieu, we've got about $15 million in payments in lieu. So this is our federal payments in lieu, the monies that we get from federal property such as the prisons, as well as our provincial and our heads and beds for the colleges, universities, the hospitals. So built within that, so we have an increase of just slightly under $200,000, which is about one point one percent increase. So we've got some annual inflation adjustments built into that. We can thank our colleagues at Utilities Kingston with their new building at 85 Latins Lane, which is a taxable building under the payments in lieu. So we've probably got about $300,000 of additional revenue there through that assessment. We've also had some delays in assessing some of the projected federal expansions. So we had budgeted about $300,000 in 2015 that we expected to receive from the feds with respect to some of the expansions that they've done around the local penitentiaries. And that's being very slow in getting, some of them are finished, but slow in getting them assessed and getting them on. We do not have any control over that, and neither does Empac with respect to those assessments. Those assessments are set by the feds and they tell us what they're assessed at. And that's what they actually pay the monies on. So we are in constant communication with them and urging them to get them on. But we have pulled it out of the 2016 budget. So there is a decrease there from the 15 budget of about $300,000. So because we're not convinced that we're even going to see it in terms of growth in 2016. The fees and charges, so the fees and charges have gone up about one and a half percent. We have a policy for the fees and charges, and the fees and charges do come to you. They'll come in December with respect to approving the 2016 amounts. Within that policy, we have that they are increased by inflation, which is roughly the two percent, plus one percent for capital where that is appropriate. And that's to keep us on an even keel in terms of a proportion for services between taxation support and user fees. So if we have taxation support going up two and a half percent and we don't have fees and charges going up the same two and a half, then we are misaligning that proportion between the two revenue sources for any particular service. So taking a look at this, we have gone up about one and a half percent. But there are three or four things that are really driving this number down from what we anticipated would have been closer to the two and a half to the three percent. First of all, we've got some declines. I've mentioned the investment income. So we've gone down by about $100,000. We usually, we budget about 1.3 million. We've budgeted 1.2 million for investment income in 2016. The other thing that's affected very much by the market and what's happening is the sale of our recyclable materials. And because what we're seeing in 2015 with respect to those revenues for those materials, we've dropped the budget down about $160,000 in 2016 to reflect the market rates that we're getting for the materials today. So we're down about 1.4 million dollars in revenue for that. We've also got a couple of areas that we've kept constant, the provincial offenses revenue. So I am talking just about the growth revenue area within this category. So provincial offenses, we're leaving at about 1.8 million. I believe we're tracking a little bit above budget this year. But that's because of a couple of significant fines that have gone through. We don't anticipate to reoccur. So we've left that at about 1.8 million dollars. The other category that we've left constant is the building permits. And we've left that at two and a half million. We are tracking under budget this year. And while we're hoping that activity will pick up next year, we didn't feel that we wanted to put it much above what we had budgeted this year. And Commissioner Hurdle will talk about that more tomorrow in her presentation. We've also had a couple of challenges in things like Marina revenues, and you'll hear some more about that. Transit revenues are increasing about one and a half percent. So, which is actually a good news story because what we're seeing is it's really just a shift between the types of fares. So certainly the employer programs and the commuters are using the transit more. So we actually are using more. But in terms of the revenue category that that affects, it's shifting down on some of the cash fares and up on things like using the employer program. So it's a good news overall. So those things altogether work out to about another one percent, or about $500,000 of fees and charges. And so that gets us from where we might have thought two and a half per policy is down to about one and a half percent. Provincial grants have gone up 2.3 million dollars. The one thing that's in this is the continued uploading of the provincial share of Ontario Works. And Commissioner Hurdle will speak about that tomorrow night. That's given us about $650,000 of additional provincial monies. We also have increased our expectation in terms of volume for transfers of money to, for Ontario Works. And so the province is now picking up 94% of that. So that also increases the provincial grants on that as well. And then transfers from reserves and reserve funds. So we do have a policy with respect to particularly our working fund reserve to be used for one-time costs, transitional type costs. And we have had a reduction of about $700,000 in this category over last year. So we've reduced our reliance on some of those one-time funds, which is a good thing. And most of that is within what is the working fund reserve contributions. Other things in this category that we've had last year and have similar this year, we have the Building Regulatory Reserve Fund, which is where any excess that we have for our building inspection program, that's a self-funding program paid for by the building permits. So if we have a surplus, that money goes into the Building Regulatory Reserve Fund. And in years where we don't have enough building permits, where it's been a little slower, we take money out of that fund in terms of balancing that service. And then we've also got some monies coming in with respect to some housing and social service initiatives. And those are one-time amounts. So in terms of expenditures, again, you can see fairly consistent in terms of the different categories that we've got. With our salaries, just notice salaries isn't on the right hand. So that bottom one is our salaries and benefits at about $114 million, about $60 million in terms of transfers to our agencies and boards. And you'll hear more about detail on that tomorrow night. Some transfers to our reserve funds, particularly for capital purposes. And grants and transfers to others. Supplies and materials about $32 million. And I want to talk a little bit about what's in that. And then you'll see a slight reduction in the budget for contracted services. And I'll provide a few details on that as well. So salaries and benefits, about $115 million in the 2016 operating budget, which is about a 2.8% increase in that category. So starting with our base salary and benefit rate adjustments, we're in the range of about 1.7 million. So everybody that's on payroll today, paying the services that we provide today, including some benefits is a challenge and continues to be a challenge from a cost standpoint in terms of costs going much more than inflation. In total, about 1.7 increase. The remaining 1.1 cent to get to the 2.8 represents new salary and benefit costs. So includes a couple of things. It includes the annualization of the express transit service, the Phase Two and Three, which is about $400,000. It also includes about $700,000 salaries and benefits of enhanced service levels in winter control, parks maintenance and culture. So in terms of some of the service pressures and the demand pressures in those areas, we have included some resources within the budget. So that gets up to the three million increase or the 2.8% in salaries and benefits. Materials and supplies, which is about 30 million, has actually decreased. It's pretty consistent, it's decreased by about 0.3%. And there's a few things in there. I put in this slide, I just wanted to kind of show the transition from 2015 budget to 2016 projected, and then 2016 what's in here. So last year, we had in the budget 29.8 million in this category. In our projection last year for 2016, we had budgeted it to be around 30.9. So we knew nine months ago that we had some pressures in particular areas and we built those into the projections. We also did a lot of work, not only for the 15 budget, but for the 16, 17 and 18 projection, to try to keep an eye on those discretionary costs and keep them constant where we could or certainly limit the increases where we could. And so you can see, we went from 29.8 to 30.9. We've continued over the last nine months to continue on with that work in terms of analyzing some of those accounts. And we've been able to bring it right back down to the 2015 budget amount. That includes some of the pressures that are built in there around utilities. And certainly utilities, I think are about three and a half percent is what we've built in on average across the budget for 2016. Some challenges in our cost for fleet parts. And I believe Commissioner Legge will be talking about that tomorrow night. But I believe part of that is our American dollar risk that we've got there. As well as in the software licenses. We've also had some substantial increases in our POA provincial court costs that were charged from the province. So those are basically downloaded to us. So we've continued to have the pressures that we, a couple new ones and a couple that we expected nine months ago. The other thing that has substantially helped us is our fuel, as Mr Hunt had said. And we have a net reduction of just under $500,000 from the 2015 budget to the 2016 budget, which is about 12 cents a liter in difference. Now, just in case, if you're paying real attention, you'll remember that Mr Hunt's slide showed that we had savings of $900,000. And I'm only showing savings of $480,000. The difference of that is because the analysis that Mr Hunt had showed was analyzing from how we saved that 1.3 million dollars gap. So that was comparing our 2016 projected to our 2016 recommended that we have tonight. I'm comparing back to 15. So in 2015 budget, we actually projected an increase for fuel of about three to four percent. So not only have we not needed that increase that we put in the projection, we've been able to lower it even lower, down by about another 12 cents a liter. And it actually works out about 15 cents a liter in savings in total. But we've had the offset for the Transit Express annualization has added a bit more, about $125,000 back into that. So we're roughly on average, and this is a rough average because we have regular and we have diesel and we have biodiesel. But on average, we're budgeting somewhere around a dollar four. Now you have to keep in mind, and if you filled up like I did yesterday, you probably paid somewhere around 98 cents for regular gas. Not a lot of a cushion there, but you have to remember, we also get back about 11% of the 13% of HST that you pay. So we have a little bit of a cushion into 2016. I'm comfortable with that because the projections, as I said, talk about it starting to go back up sometime into 2016. So I think we've got a bit of a cushion there if that happens. We have not built in anything, any reductions forward for 17 and 18. We've actually built in about two or three percent increase for 17, 18 and 19 because we're just not comfortable that the gas prices are going to stay down as low as they are once you get that far out. But I think we're pretty comfortable for what's in there for 2016. Contracted services, so we've got a couple of things happening here. So we've decreased about $600,000. Part of that is a reduction in some of the one-time housing homelessness initiatives that are funded from the reserve funds. And so a couple of reports that Commissioner Hurdle has brought over the last few months with respect to some of these initiatives. And we make use of the reserve fund to hold those monies and then pull them out in the year that they're actually spent. So a good chunk of that actually is affecting our total category for contracted services. We do have some pressures around software support and maintenance. And certainly costs going up more than inflation for some of those, as well as being affected by the US. But we have had offset in other savings that's helped that, so that we've still ended up with a net of 600,000. The other thing that is in that category, if you're looking back to our projection, is the insurance. And we had forecasted nine months ago, based on some of our activity prior to that, we had forecasted about a 10% increase in our insurance costs, which is $2.5 million of insurance. So about 250,000. We actually had savings of about 35,000. We've actually been able to hold the insurance based on estimates that we're receiving fairly constant from 2015. So that's also helped us in that category. And the grants and transfers to others I mentioned, this is primarily transfers for Ontario Works, housing and childcare. And you'll hear more about this from Commissioner Hurdle tomorrow night. But mostly the transfers for Ontario Works and the changes that we've had there in terms of building in a rate that the province sets, a rate increase that the province sets, as well as a bit of a cushion for increased volume that's potential to happen for 2016. And then transfers to reserve funds. So we have about 60 million going into capital reserve funds as part of the operating budget. This is increased by about 3.7 million. The biggest component of this is our one percent levy. So we've got about an additional 2.6 million going into the municipal capital reserve funds. We also have about another 1 million that relates to additional investments within our operating budget for facilities, parking, fleet and transit. So some of those areas where we have non-tax revenues. And we've got shares of those revenues also going in to help fund the related capital. And so we've seen an increase there particularly to match some of the increase in demand on the capital side. Included in this is also contributions to the agency's capital reserve funds, which is just over $4 million. And you'll see that split out in your binder, I've just included it in here as consolidated. And then the transfers to agencies and boards, about 62 million. So this is about a 1.9% increase consolidated. With their capital transfers to the reserve funds, it's about 2.3. But you'll hear them speaking tomorrow around the numbers that make up the 1.9. So the agencies and boards, and I've just listed them here, but they're also in your report. So we've listed the projections that have been cited. We do have some, we've received a submission from all the agencies this year. We do have some that are still in draft because they're still subject to board approval. But we're not expecting any significant change. So you can see the CRCA is in draft, DBIA I believe is in draft. The Health Unit is in draft, and the Health Unit will not be presenting tomorrow night. I believe their board meeting is tomorrow, or I think it might be Wednesday. I think it was a day or two off. So they weren't comfortable presenting until they'd had a chance to actually present to their own board. So, but we've been working with them to get the projection to include in our numbers. And I've been talking with Dr Gammell about if he'd like to come at a future date once it's got through their board. And County of Frontenac, I believe, just got passed this week or late last week. And again, those projections have come directly from them. So I think actually by the time they're here tomorrow night, they probably won't be draft anymore. So capital budget, 69.6 million dollar recommended capital budget. So this was the test, to see whether you picked this up or not. This is not the number that's in the recommendation in the report. Because every year, we have to have something that we change just to keep you on your toes. So I'll come back to that in a moment when I talk about a couple of the projects and I can talk about what has changed. So within your binder, we have the 15-year capital plans. We also have the reserve fund models, 15 years, the reserve fund models. So you can see what are some of what we're seeing in terms of projections and future expenditures to come. Built within those models, you'll also see some projects that council has already approved previous to tonight. So the Third Crossing Design and Financial Plan, 2.9 million dollars. The Princess Street Phase Four, which was moved up, 15 and a half million, which also includes the water and sewer. And the North Block Parking Structure that was just approved recently for 18 million dollars. So those projects have been, they're approved. They're treated like 2015 projects. And you'll see them within all of our funding models and our debt calculations, they're already included. In terms of issuance of long-term debt, we are within our debt ceiling until 2019. And CIO Hunt provided that picture, and I'm going to come back to that in a moment. So key projects, so the one on here, the additional transit buses for 2.3. So as Mr Hunt had said, and Commissioner Legge will provide more detail tomorrow night, we have sort of determined over the last few days that we need to do this, particularly because of the timing of the ordering. We need to order these buses sooner as opposed to later, particularly for the end of December. And so And so we have changed the budget to include them. It's about a $1.8 million expenditure, and if you look in the 15-year capital plans, you'll see that 1.8 at about $600,000 a year for 2017, 18, and 19, within the transit capital expense. We've just taken that and moved it all up 2016 column. We funded that from the transit reserve funds, so pay-as-you-go, this hasn't affected our debt numbers at all. And I didn't hand out a new transit reserve fund, you have that model in your binder as well, but we were able to absorb that within that reserve fund. So we had enough funds within there. Because we were just moving the timing up for between three years, we were able to absorb that within the pay-as-you-go. So anything that you're seeing in the presentation, I will absorb that, and we've left it to the clerk to figure out the process tomorrow night on how we get that recommendation changed. Mr. Hunt went through these other key projects, so I won't go through them all again. You can see them within the 2016 capital plan. In terms of the funding, so we have, the majority of our funding is coming from the municipal reserve funds, so that's pay-as-you-go. No debt involved for that $44 million. We are projecting to issue long-term debt of $24.3 million, and that's made up of three projects. The Central Library, which we spoke about earlier, so the $11.3 million that will be debt-funded, $10 million of the $16 million airport expansion, $10 million of that is expected to be funded by debt, and $3 million for the K and P Trail. So those are the three projects that we are looking at debt-funding. And you'll see within those reserve fund models, as we issue that debt and start paying it, they'll be coming, those debt payments will come out of the reserve funds at that time. We've got a couple of things that are being funded from the Working Fund, they are in our capital budget, but they are appropriately to be from the Working Fund Reserve, including some of the open government initiatives that council has approved. And then we've got some contribution from others. There's a little bit of provincial grant in there, there's some contributions from, and there's some contributions from the county for some of the library capital. So the other thing I just wanted to talk about briefly was the debt and where we're going, and I'm actually going to skip ahead of this a bit and come back to that. So just taking a look at this picture. So you can see, we're above the green line in 2019. Now, this is done based on cash flow, so when we do this particular model, if you approve tomorrow night $24 million of debt, I'm not issuing that the next day. I probably won't be issuing it for another two, maybe even three years, depending on when the projects actually are completed, and depending on what interest rates are going on and what's happening in the market. So for this particular model, we actually cash flow this and say, we have approval in one year, but when are we actually going to be issuing the debt? What do we think the interest rate is going to be? And we build that in here and project what our principal repayments are going to be against that. So it does tend to move around a little bit. If you compare this to the one I showed you in January, when you approved the 2015 budget, we were above the line for two of the three years. So we've gotten a tad bit worse than we were in January. It's now three years before we come back down. But really, the main reason for that, we actually have been able to prioritize and particularly move our timing around a little bit to our benefit. But when you start moving things out, it means you're not paying them off as quick. So it was good news we were moving things out, and of course, as you can see, the green line goes up. So farther I can move it out, the more room I've got, the more capacity I've got. But it also meant that we weren't paying back as quickly as we had projected nine months ago in this model. So that actually has put us just a little bit over the line in 2021 before we start to come down. Standard and Poor's is well aware of this. We hadn't shared this one with them, but they certainly had sat down and reviewed with us the one that we had with our January projections. And actually, in the report that they sent, they did actually make comment that they recognized that we had a couple of large projects, particularly on the utility side, that were driving things up temporarily, but that it was a temporary blip, and that we had a longer-term plan to come back down. So we're not concerned from that standpoint that we're a little bit over the line for one extra year. The other thing that we keep an eye on, Standard and Poor's, the last two or three years, and I think I mentioned this last year, they've been willing to share with us some of their calculations in terms of some of the KPIs that they look at when they're doing their evaluation. And there's a couple of them that we also keep a close eye on in terms of our debt levels. One is that our total debt remains below 120% of our operating revenues. It's not just taking our operating revenues, they have their own calculation, and they pull out social services grants, and they do a few other things. But basically, the consolidated operating revenue number that they come up with, as long as we stay below 120% of that, they're pretty happy in terms of the rating that they have given us today. Obviously, if we went significantly below that, our rating might go up, but we're not anticipating that at any time soon. So doing the calculations using their numbers, the magic number's somewhere around $525 million, maybe $550 million in there somewhere. And even at our highest point, I think, is only about $508 million. So we're okay, I think, just in terms of trying to project what they might look at in another year when they're looking at these models. The other thing that they look at is after capital deficits, and it's a deficit because they do things a little different. They take our total operating expenses plus all of our capital, total capital. So it doesn't matter if it's debt, it doesn't matter when we've paid it, it's just the total capital that we've paid out, and so less whatever revenues we've had for that year. So capital, obviously, as you know, goes over more than one year, so they're trying to actually do a one-year calculation with a multi-year expenditure. So it always puts it into a deficit, and they realize that. But they look at that, as long as we're averaging less than 10% of that adjusted total revenue number, then we're okay. And we are well below that, and even in our projections for the next three or four years, we're below that 10%. So again, we don't see any concern in terms of that picture and where we are today. And then finally, just in terms of projected debt, so you can see here, we've updated this, provided this to council in March in the debt limits report. And you can see that we've got issued debt now of $313 million. We issued about $50 million a few months ago that council had approved. So that was debt that had been approved but not issued. Now it's approved and issued. And our debt approved not yet issued is about $256 million. So we have in total about $570 million of debt that's either issued or waiting to be issued. We're adding about another $24 million on here. And then we've taken off the principal repayments up until the end of 18, because we do have debt approved right up until 2018 because of the four-year capital budget that was approved last year. So taking the principal repayments that are projected off, we're down to around $540 million. And again, probably when we're standing here in 2018, we may have some more added on, but we also will have had timing that will adjust this. So this is actually the true numbers without any timing built into it. And I think that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Questions from council? It's Councilor Neal.
Thank you. A couple of questions, and these may go to the CAO or to Mr. Keach, who I hope isn't leaving. My questions were regarding the operating budget. Given the promises made in the very recent federal election, I know that there will, I'm assuming there will be some opportunities for infrastructure, asset management kind of things generally, but public transit and affordable housing specifically, where there will be, and the province has bought into this idea as well, so the old three-party kinds of capital projects. Thanks, I think, to our very cautious and prudent little budget management and our high credit rating. Are we in a position through, and a utility involved, if the promise to help co-fund energy conservation comes about, do we, are we in a position where we could fully realize those priorities if that opportunity arose?
See you, Hunt.
So perhaps Treasurer Kennedy would put up that graph again for me, through you, Mr. Mayor. So that's always part of the strategy for us as we look at our long-term strategic capital planning. We like to have projects shovel-ready. We know that we have a number of projects that are already in the four-year capital plan that's been approved that are considered shovel-ready, and on occasion, and we have in the past, and even in the past year, had the ability to submit a couple of those for funding, in which case, if we get funding from upper levels of government, it means that we can save our own money, and it reflects in this. We leave the money in reserves and then pay it if we don't have government funding. The two areas that you're particularly mentioning, one, affordable housing, you can see where that, where those blue lines start to, underneath the green line, again, on a cash flow basis. So as the federal government and the provincial government align their programs, if they do that, depending on the state of their own finances, we believe that there will be opportunities for us to capitalize on that alignment. And one of the projects council has given us direction on was the Third Crossing to be shovel-ready. That is something that we're working with engineering and utilities on to make sure that we are shovel-ready when a grant program opens, if it was to be for bridge-type infrastructure. On the affordable housing front, or perhaps on the social housing front, we know that across Canada, there's a looming rehabilitation effort that will need to go into housing. And we have been watching patiently. At the last meeting of council, you saw the nation of our particular Kingston-Frontenac housing, primary Kingston-Frontenac housing lands in Rita Heights, as well as, you know, through recent discussions at MARCO and LUMCO and others across the province and through FCM, we know that housing is beginning to gain an interest, and people understand that, you know, it's going to take three levels of government to actually be participate, to participate in the rejuvenation of those assets. So we are well positioned to start to have some of those discussions. I don't think that the programs are going to be announced in the next two or three years, or sorry, two or three months, going to take a couple of years to be able to outline the criteria. And we will continue to work to be in a position to capitalize on those when those opportunities arise.
I appreciate that answer and the recognition at the end of that answer, that this will give us some additional, potential for additional investment. I know it's tempting to say we've got a number of things shovel-ready and we can move up things from four, five years from now to do them more immediately as these projects come aboard. But I think it's also an opportunity to look at council priorities and to speed up, not just speed up, but actually enlarge some of our investment in things like public transit. And I look forward to that opportunity.
Councilor McLaren.
Thank you. I'm on page 7 of 23 of the report. I really like this first paragraph here. I compared it to last year's paragraph, in which the numbers were just slightly different. And by my calculations, it seems that the budget has gone up, or the total budget, operating budget, has gone up by about $10.2 million. And the other than tax-related revenues has gone up by $4.1 million, and that appears to leave $6.1 million required in net property taxes. Throughout your presentation, I heard a lot of ways of which we were saving money and reducing our total taxes, that would be the first number, or the total budget necessary, and how assessment were going up. Wondering if you could give me any ideas on a corporate level of how you can increase non-tax revenue, or other-than-tax revenues, it's called here, in such a way that preferably that we could make it equal to the increase in the budget?
So I think you will, you'll certainly hear more detail of what's in this number. So this number rolled up includes not only our fees and charges, that type of non-tax revenue, but also our provincial, federal grants, contributions from other municipalities. So there's a number of things going on within that. The big one, as I did mention, was the fees and charges, and I listed the four or five areas that were a challenge for us in terms of not seeing that going up by 2.5% or 3%. But on the other side, we've also had a number of other areas that have gone up, particularly in the fees and charges. So I think you will hear more about that tomorrow night as we get into the detail of some of the particular areas and where fees are projected to go up. So that's definitely a net number. The provincial grants, of course, is also something that's always a difficult one in terms of knowing what's, not a whole lot of control over those dollars that are coming in, so that's affected within there as well.
Councilor Allen.
Thank you, you're worshiping through you. Just kind of thinking about what Councilor McLaren was saying, what actually stood out for me was that we've had a couple routes that we've had to expand in different departments, solid waste, snowplow, transit. But our assessment growth has not sort of matched that expanded need essentially, or we've already, we've been putting it off for a little bit. Is there an art, or is there a way that we can strategize to get, keep our assessment growth in line with our operational, with our operational growth? Because that's the only way we're going to be able to cover those increased costs and stay within our 2.5 limit essentially, is we need to have more people paying for our services at the same rate as everybody else. Do I have that about right? And if so, what is the kind of target assessment that we would need to have over the next couple of years?
See you, Hunt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start, and Treasurer Kennedy can add to it. So it's not a lineal calculation that you can do. Quite often, you have costs of service going up somewhat in steps. So you may end up with, you know, a subdivision area that has added two or three streets, but we may have the capacity within our control program to actually absorb that at any particular time. So the direct correlation between assessment growth and direct service cost is not one that I have seen in my career in finance ever been able to be calculated. So generally speaking, what we have been doing is, you know, trying to establish budgets is really a number of different strategies. It isn't as narrow as, well, if we get this much more new money, how do we spend it? We think that would be not the right approach. We would like to continue to concentrate on how do we increase other-than-tax revenues? How do we reduce costs? How do we find efficiencies? How do we change services? How do we contemplate, you know, not providing services if they're not needed? So the assumptions that go into the budget can be quite complex. But at the end of the day, in the past number of years, we have been successful in having relatively stable assessment growth in the range of $1.5 million. And that has allowed us to spend money in areas where we needed to see some increases. So over those years, I can think we've spent substantially in transit. We spent in culture. We spent, in some cases, winter control money. We've spent money in recreation and in parks maintenance and things of that sort. And those are all part and parcel of bringing quality of life to the community. It's nice to be in a situation where you have some estimates that are reasonably consistent. I think that the issue this year is that we recognize that the housing and/or the development market is weak, and as a result, we're short a half a million dollars from having the sum of money. Our projections are that we'll recover that back to a stable program beginning in 2017. And with that, we will then take that into consideration with some of the changes And with that, we will then take that into consideration with some of the changes council might like to see in services. But I, I think the message that I would leave you here tonight is that for the three or four or five years, we've been able to find a way to continue to streamline operations, continue to not change frontline services, continue to work, get effectiveness in our operations. But there will come a day where we will have to consider service adjustments in order to stay within the tax target. And fortunately, if you have reasonable growth, you can, you can manage around that a little bit. But I, I think that staff and council will have to work diligently in the next couple of years to make sure we, we manage prudently and we, we budget accordingly so that we understand the implications and the decisions that have to be made in order to hold reasonable tax-level increases. So with respect to growth, Desiree, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I think the only other thing I'd say is that we are a little bit at the mercy in terms of the timing. So as George said, it doesn't necessarily align up sort of every year. The other thing I think I can add, just sort of looking back over the years, and he listed, George listed all the different areas that we've addressed growth. One of the advantages as we've moved this last few years into two-year, three-year, and now four-year projections in terms of our operating, is it gives us that broader picture, which means that we are starting to maybe align a little bit more with the growth. So we can kind of say this year, we need to, we need to address growth in recreation and this year in culture and maybe this year over in winter control and this year in police, because the agencies are a part of that as well. So I think our broader picture allows us to help align it a little bit better. But we're definitely also at the mercy of not only the building community, but our assessment in terms of when that's coming online. And we're trying to fine-tune that with our relations with MPAC, but that still can be a challenge.
Great. And I just have one more question. Thank you for explaining how it doesn't quite line up. That makes a lot of sense. Maybe as councillors, we can help encourage things to line up a little more into investment in our community. But the other quite, thing you spoke about quite a bit actually was fuel costs. And, and you, you mentioned that it's hard to see beyond a year out. I'm wondering if there has been any high-level discussions around some of the proposed cap-and-trade systems and how that may impact our municipality. I mean, I'm for overall reduction of fuel, but from a budget perspective, it could be a challenge and if we've considered that in our projections down the road.
Who wants to take that? Say, you, Hunt.
So I can take a stab at that. So part of our strategy is to, under our climate action plan, to begin the process of understanding the impact of fuel and, and emissions and ways to determine usage restrictions or usage reductions. But we're, we're in the early stages of that. At the moment, it is more of a financial calculation, trying to peg a very volatile market. You know, nine months ago, we, we really had no idea how high it would go. And, and at the moment, it seems to be stable from a pump price perspective. But we understand that, you know, from a commodities perspective, it's likely going to be in the range that it is in on a per-barrel basis for quite some time, from what the forecasts show. Unfortunately, that price per barrel doesn't always translate into reduced cost per liter. So for this particular budget, we're comfortable at the price that we've budgeted. We're going to monitor it very closely, but how that translates into strategies for carbon footprint reductions and/or greenhouse gas emissions and things of that sort, that's all to come.
Counselor Kennedy.
Thank you. I have two questions. The first one is related to salaries and benefits. After we approved last year's budget, one of my most common comments was people inquiring about the amount of staff we have and the salaries associated with it. And to be honest, I didn't have a great response when people questioned the amount of staff or the salaries or things of that nature. Do you have anything that would quantify, or something to stack it up against that we could provide people with answers? Because when I was asked that question as to justify the amount that we pay in salaries and benefits, I didn't have a great answer. Would you be able to help me out with that?
So we could provide further information on that. I think that, I mean, certainly in terms of building it up, like total number of staff, we've, we've got all that information. Benefits is also a large component of that. But I think, and then I think too, just in terms of some of the additions that we have on in terms of some of our service pressures, I should have mentioned, we also have reductions. So we also are continually looking at ways to, to shift responsibilities around or if we've got a position that doesn't need to be filled and moving that elsewhere to fill something else. So, so it kind of goes both ways, but we have that information.
Say, you, Hunt.
In addition, so the majority of our staff, so we, we have between full and part-time staff, which would include, and I'll be broad enough to include Utilities Kingston and Police Services and all of the people that typically could attach themselves to municipal employee base. You know, roughly 1,500 employees. We have a number of different unions. The, the rate that Desiree spoke to at 1.7 in terms of the general rate of increase is in line with inflation and in line with the collective agreement negotiated, negotiations that we have. And for non-union, those wage increases change with inflation, they're pegged to inflation. So, so those are the numbers of staff and those how, those are how the base salaries increase. And I think that that's important to realize. We also have market comparisons that are done on a periodic basis relative to the types of skills and employees that we have, because it's one of the, one of the challenges in keeping services going is you have to have your skill base and your employees ready and trained to be able to deliver on those. So there's a number of different elements that go into what makes it up. I think Desiree also covered the fact that benefit costs, anybody that does pay benefit costs or pays shares of benefit costs as part of their employer contracts, employment contracts with people. It's a growing cost that everyone has to take into consideration. I think one of the strategies that we have is that we, we look at all-in costs, which is not only the, the wage rate costs, but also the cost of benefits and try to, try to peg that as close to inflation as we can in terms of our negotiations on a regular basis, given that we do have multiple different unions from time to time we have to negotiate contracts with.
Thank you. My second question is with regards to projected debt balances. It says in 2020, obviously, it appears that we're going to hit a peak. And then 10 years from there, the projection is 2030, it's going to drop a reasonable amount. I mean, looking at that, is that on the assumption that we're not doing any more expenditures? Because I, or is there a pattern in municipalities where their, their debt decreases over a 10-year period?
So there's two things. It does have expenditures projected out for the 15 years. So there are planned expenditures within there. And we try to keep those at a fairly consistent level, to make sure it's not just dropping off because we don't have enough expenditures. But the other thing that's happening is we do have the 1% capital levy. So that helps us, as that goes into the reserve funds, it helps us to fund more from the pay-as-you-go and less reliance on debt. So we're also seeing some of that as we go out, so that, so that our debt levels are coming down.
Thank you.
In addition, Mr. Mayor, the couple of things that are driving that down as well is that in the 2018 to 2022 period, you're, you're seeing a significant amount of, of increases in debt due to major facilities like water plants and sewer plants. Once the municipality gets those plants built, we won't be building any expansion requirements or renewing those plants for over 30 years. And so that's contributing to the fact that we're paying off debt rather than going into more debt.
Thank you.
Ms. Kennedy, I just have a couple of questions related to a couple of items that you highlighted for us. You talked about the, the slow pace of the assessment growth with the federal properties, the payment in lieu of taxes. So just to clarify, that would be retroactive then, once it does come into play? So it's not as though, it's just a timing issue? It's not as though we're missing out on that money? It's just a matter of when it comes into play? Is that right?
That's correct. It should be. Now, again, we're at the mercy a little bit of them. They set the assessment and they set the timing. But certainly, that's what should be happening. It should be retroactive to the date that it was occupied.
Okay. Thank you. Second question was related to the POA costs. You said that that was downloaded essentially from the province. What's the, what was the dollar amount associated?
I don't have the actual dollar amounts. Now, we'll probably have that available tomorrow night when we're doing the department presentations. But it's the, the court costs. And I think it was somewhere, percentage, it was somewhere around maybe 15% or something like that, increase in the, in the cost that the province bills down to us.
Okay. The other question that I have, so we were talking about assessment growth and how important that is to, to hit our, our target for tax rate increase. What role does intensification play when we're seeing a lot of projects that are using our brownfields program? So, so there's a lot of deferred taxation revenue that's going to compensate for that. So we understand that's an important strategy. But how, how much is that factoring in now that we're really focused on redeveloping the, the urban core? And is that, is that going to be a temp? Are we just in a, in a, in a period of time where we're having to wait because of these projects coming forward before that tax assessment begins? Do you have any sense of what we would see going forward?
So I think a couple of things there. So definitely, the, the brownfields initiative does defer it. And we have, that's actually increased, and we'll talk about that tomorrow night. That's in our budget. It's up to about $1.2 million a year now that we're repaying on brownfields. So definitely, there are, there are timing differences with that. I think the other thing though, and this is sort of the age-old question when you're talking about intensification, is, is it comes back to that assessment versus the cost. And certainly, you know, the cost of, of something downtown where we've got a transit route or we've got the snowplow already going down through, you know, there should be a net, a net assessment growth there that's, that's certainly helping. I think the other thing that we're seeing is, and we have projected assessment at about $1.5 million for the next three years. So we are anticipating things to, to pick up. One of the things that you'll hear tomorrow night is that the, the assessment's low we're projecting in 2016 because it's not, there's not buildings out there, but things are in front of the OMB. And so there's delays in terms of some of the buildings. So potentially, that's going to pick up and we'll see that later into 16 or potentially into 17, which is why we put the projections up there.
Thank you. Counselor Turner.
Thank you. And through you, Your Worship, you asked my question about the in lieu of payment for taxes. But the one thing I was going to ask you is 1987, that was a long time ago that they haven't increased the taxes. So, but hopefully we'll be able to fix that, I guess, and you answered my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Hutchinson.
Thank you, Your Worship. The CEO mentioned that, that depending on the situation with the current federal government, that we'll be looking at possibilities of erecting or doing something around housing. So my question is, do, we talked about having shovel-ready projects of various sorts. I'm just wondering if we have a shovel-ready affordable housing project, should that come down the line? I say this because housing is the best employment multiplier out there and it seems to be part of the tract of the current federal government.
Say, you, Hunt.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, the, the projects I'm referring to are the complete rebuilds of the, of the housing that was devolved, devolved to the cities or municipalities from the provincial government, the, primarily the stock of the Kingston Frontex Housing Corporation. And those are massive projects. I think the number that was on the list at the last council meeting when it was presented was something like $125 million of gross over 25 years. So certainly, those are, are the areas of concern. But we, we certainly do have an interest in capitalizing on any opportunities that may exist for short-term, shorter-term affordable housing initiatives. And Commissioner Hurd will be happy to go into more detail on that tomorrow night.
Thank you.
Okay. So no other questions? Thank you very much. So moving on now to number eight, we have our first departmental presentation. So we'll invite Mr. Keach back up to talk about Public Works Services.
Thank you, Your Worship. I feel like I was just here. So, my picture's not coming up for the slides. I think I will just skip to the next one. I was going to start this presentation off similar to how I did with the, the UK one, just indicating that, a much quicker presentation, because we have got a four-year budget in place and talk a little bit about some of the, the highlights of the four-year budget and some of the driving features, which was a picture that's not coming up. But I think I covered that off fairly well in the UK presentation. So I'm going to skip through that and head to, directly into the operating budgets for the Public Works Groups. And as with the UK one, I'm going to first off talk about what we are doing in Public Works Services to support the council priorities. And for the Public Works Services Group, we have highlighted three areas of which council identified as priorities. And that's not to say that there aren't things going on in Public Works for all six. But there are three that I thought I would speak specifically about and specifically about some of the, the details that council identified during their priority session. Now, I will say with some of these, I am repeating what I said with the Utilities Kingston, but I think for this part, it's important that council realizes that both groups are working on it. So I, I will go through some of the, the projects again. So under the Invest in Infrastructure, there are some, I would say, key projects that the engineering group is focusing on. One, make the Third Crossing shovel-ready to commence construction by the end of this term of council. That is something that we are continuing to work on. And we will be back in front of council before the end of the year with a report in this regards and a recommendation for, hopefully for a consultant to carry on with the next steps of, of this project. Advance in the multimodal and active transportation system. There, I know there was a lot of debate around the, the Transportation Master Plan and coming out of that, an active transportation plan, which is something that we will be looking at undertaking again over the, the course of this term of council. Maintain roadways and sidewalks, again, one of the ones that I talked on with the UK presentation, but obviously a very key area for, to the Public Works Services Group, the engineering and also public services, Damon's area. You know, little things such as identifying improvements from an operation perspective, how we can eliminate trips and falls. And then, you know, support one of the areas that Ms. Kennedy was talking about in regards to liability issues and whatnot. Two more substantial issues, such as the work that we are doing to improve on winter control. And for those of you on the ATP, saw what I think was a very detailed report. The, the work that the consultant done and then staff have done in analyzing how we handled winter control last year. And then coming forward with recommendations and some of those recommendations I'm going to address a little bit later in, in this presentation. Completely John County Boulevard project, so basically taking it from where it left off, I guess just west of Sir John A. McDonald through to Princess Street. And the big part of this project that's currently being worked on, basically getting ready for the overpass over the train tracks by the via station. Project that has been started and will continue on for this term of council. And then as I talked with the UK one, just continued support for the, the four-year long-term plan. And also starting working on the, the new plan and looking at a number of things from condition of assets to how we can support development. The next item, Plan a Livable City. And the comments here, very similar to the comments that I made in the earlier presentation. And that is really looking at how we can foster intensification in the city. And that is really looking at how we can foster intensification in the city core. And if I look at project, one of the major projects that was completed this past year with the Young Street, although it may not have been right in the downtown area, it is still within the old city. And that was very much, very much development-driven, some projects around Queen's University that we did not have the sewer capacity to deal with. So, this was a project that was included in the, the four-year plan to support development, support intensification from a utility perspective and a roads perspective. And the other one that I, I think is, is obvious to all of council and the public, but just will touch on again, the, the next phase, Princess Street, the third phase that will start, believe it or not, within a couple of months. And then the fourth phase of Princess Street that was, was approved by council back, I guess, a month or a month and a half ago, and that is definitely being driven in that it was moved up in the schedule because of some very significant development projects that will no doubt support the, the goal for intensification within the core. In Green the City, Intensify Urban Forest, Double the Tree Canopy. We will be bringing forward a report to council, hopefully, in the first quarter, if not very early in the second quarter, as to how we plan on tackling this initiative that, that again came out of your priority setting session. Enhance the waste management and recycling opportunities. I think quite often, within the Public Works Services Group, the solid waste group sometimes gets, gets forgotten, but we, we are aware, very aware of council direction to enhance this level, increase the diversification rate. That's, that's an area that we continue to work on. And I always find this an interesting one because it's, to me, it's really saying two separate things. So, enhance waste and recycling opportunities, which we are doing, and that will, you know, we'll work to that with projects to increase the diversion rate. And then promote a litter safe, a litter-free city. They can be viewed as the same thing, but I actually quite often view them as different. So, yeah, the, the more garbage that we pick up, or really, the less that's produced, you're not going to have as much litter. But looking at the litter-free city gets things like the work that Damon's group has been done and the downtown core to, you know, work with the B I A, enhance really the way the downtown is seen. Also, things that we are doing, you know, elsewhere throughout the city and in some of our parks and our playing fields to make sure that we're working to reduce the level of litter. So, so that, that area, we view from two different aspects. So, if I look at the numbers, these have been touched on before by Ms. Kennedy, the level of increases, the one that I, I do want to just talk a little bit about, the solid waste one, so that is up above the, the level that we have provided direction on. The main driver in that is actually the sale of recycling. And I, I think you've, the councillors who have been here for a while have heard us talk before that this, these are markets. We shop the markets. We try to get the best value that we can. This is a different shopping because we're not out buying a product, we're selling products. And these, these markets do tend to vary significantly. And the revenue is not just with the markets, but also with the amounts that's produced. So, sometimes when you're successful in getting people to reduce, it also does have a financial impact on us. And that is one of the main drivers in the, in the increase in this area. Just a few minutes and just go through each department and talk about some of the projects, some of the things that we are focusing on over the, the coming year and some of them throughout the term of council. In the engineering group, asset management, this, this remains a key focus in the area. And I think it's an area that we have demonstrated to council over the last ten years that we are much more diligent in, we're much more professional in our asset management plans. The way we go about picking projects, be it roads projects, bridges, whatnot, there is way more data gathered and way more engineering analysis that takes place than what would have happened back at the time of amalgamation. And we continue to improve on how we go about this. And that feeds, obviously, directly into the current and the future multi-year construction plans. I touched on that a number of times. I pointed out here because it is an extremely important part of what the engineering group does. It's obviously not the only thing that we do. If you look down through the list, the support that we do for development projects that is listed here as well is also key. And, you know, that goes back to intensification. It also goes back to the comments that Ms. Kennedy made because it's important the engineering group works hand in hand with the planning group to make sure that development approvals go through as quickly as, as, as can while being as diligent as we need to be. One of the projects that has taken a fair amount of time from the engineering group, and this has also significantly impacted utilities Kingston, is our support for the Bell Fiber to the Home Build. I think people are well aware, you've seen the, the Bell trucks, the expert trucks, I believe it is, working throughout the city, different areas. Basically, wherever they, wherever they dig, wherever they're working, it requires municipal approvals from, from the engineering, from Mark's area. A number of it also requires work from utilities Kingston in, in strengthening poles and whatnot. This, this has been a significant, I would say, drain on the workforces in, in various areas. I know Mark has supplemented this with some part-time help. Now, Bell is paying the cost of all this, but it, it has been, continues to be very laborant. And I, I believe it's a, it's a project that has been delayed a bit. I don't think any, anything is a result of, of city work, but just, you know, from the way that Bell has gone about this. We had hoped it had been done in this year, 2015, but it appears that we'll proceed on into 2016. And we are also looking at, or have been working with Kojiko, because Kojiko is looking at a similar project like this, which will obviously involve support from the city and, and utilities Kingston. And the other one, advanced transportation demand management measures. So, this is an area that we have heard from, from council, looking at different ways of making use of current infrastructure as opposed to, to just building additional infrastructure. And that will be a focus in the engineering department and I believe with the planning group as well, not just for 2016, but going forward through the term of council. Moving to the Public Works Group, so this is Damon's, Damon's area. Couple of key areas that we are going to be focusing on over the, the next year, and again, some of these will continue on in the subsequent years. The first one I, I mentioned already, but I think it's important just to touch on again. And this is supporting the, the downtown core and, you know, the area where we have rebuilt Princess Street during the first couple of phases, and we'll continue to work on that to make sure that the infrastructure that we go in is properly maintained. We do the work to make sure that garbage is picked up, streets are swept. Been a lot of good work, I think, done with the B I A, and I'm not sure if council saw the email that came out tonight from the B I A, and I, I thought that was, was quite positive to see. But it's something that we need to continue to focus on. And, you know, the work that we've done, Williamsville further up Princess Street, and as the two areas come closer together, I, I think, you know, the whole area, the whole length of Princess Street from what, what I would refer to as the old traffic circle down to the waterfront will continue to be one of the key areas of focus, not the only area of focus, Market Square, I think around King's University is as well, but this is one that I think we've been quite successful in with some of the changes we've made. The other one, obviously, and I touched on this already, is an ongoing focus on winter control. We did hear from council and from E I T P last year that they wanted us to step back, take a look at how we were providing the services, are there areas that we can improve on? Do we have the right resources? Last year at this, although I guess it was earlier this year, but for the budget for 2015, we came forward with some equipment purchases that have taken place. Some of that equipment will be delivered for, for this coming winter control season. We hired a consultant to look at how successful we were last year, and the results that came back were actually fairly good. We met the level of service that, that we have a commitment to meet the vast majority of the time. There were some times that we didn't. And resourcing and resourcing, just being able to get the bodies in the, in the equipment. And generally, the equipment is the snowplow, the snow, the sidewalks, snowplows. So, we, we are in this budget looking to add three additional staff members. They will initially focus on winter control, but then also in the item that's just below this on some of the sports meals, sports fields and the parks maintenance issues. And this is a, an additional area that we will be focusing more on from the public works perspective next year. We know, we did hear the comments from some of the user groups. We have taken steps already to address a number of them. One of the things that we did do is look at, you know, are there some minor capital improvements that we could do that would assist in that? And there will be, or there are some capital expenditures, the money included in Ms. Hurdle's budget, but Damon's group will actually undertake it. Some things like fencing, backstop repairs, bleachers and that, where we, you know, we continue to go out, make the repairs, but the feeling is we just need to do some replacement work on that. So, you know, the, the areas here, continue to look at the downtown. How can we continue to get better with winter control and the same with sports fields maintenance? The last area is solid waste, and I touched a little bit already on the, on the increase, the, in the increase in budget. The, the key focus here will be on the sixty percent waste diversion, diversion target that council has set. And really, the majority of the efforts that we do here and the, the three that are indicated, one, a campaign that we are embarking on to try to increase awareness, trying to make the usage of green bins easier for people. We have heard that it's difficult for some people in apartments, maybe that don't have vehicles, to get to a location and get a green bin, take it back so they can use it. So, we are offering a delivery server, green bins for people who don't have them. And also, working with some of the apartment owners, multi-residential groups to help increase the recycling in those areas. But again, all of this feeding into trying to accomplish the, the target that council has set of a sixty percent waste diversion. So, that's the, the presentation. It's fairly high level, and any questions, the group of us will answer.
Thank you. Questions from council? Counselor Hutchinson.
Thank you, your worship. On page fifteen, it talks about road repairs, and that was quite an issue this past spring. And it says that the recorded road repair program in the spring of 2014, the same approach we utilized by, for the fall, spring during each year of the multi-year plan. That cost us, I believe, about three and a half million dollars, this last program. Are we going to be funding that from reserves? I'm not saying I'm against it, I just want to be clear about how much we're talking about spending and, and where we're going to take it from.
So, the exact funding source of that, I would leave to the, the treasurer to answer, but it could come from capital reserves or it could come from pay-as-you-go. It would be, to me, similar for funding sources for other type of road work that we would do. We have found this program to be extremely successful. It, the approach that we took last year where we basically hired contractors to come in and pave fairly significant sections of the road. And, and again, because the, I'd say, the destruction to the road over that winter was, was quite extensive, very successful, and it's something that we plan to continue to work forward or to look forward and, and work on, probably not to the extent that first time around, but, but definitely going forward. And it, it appears to have a significant payback, not just in customer satisfaction, but also hopefully getting a little bit more lifetime out of the roadways.
Thank you. I agree with everything you said, it was necessary. So, it seems that road repair, we've taken a bit of a, a turn of the dial here. It's like that we're approaching it more as a capital item, more than an, an operating item where we go and patch, you know, potholes, fill them and patch them. We're actually trying to do more extensive repairs than, say, we were doing seven or eight years ago.
Yeah, I'd say that's true, yes.
Yes, thank you. Okay.
Next on my list is Counselor Sanik.
Thank you, your worship. I threw you three questions. So, one is just continuing on for Counselor Hutchinson about the roads maintenance and sidewalk maintenance. So, we heard that, you know, there will be still focus on those two areas, but on page nineteen in the budget binder, it looks like those are going down, like in roads maintenance, it looks like it's a reduction of twenty-one thousand, and for sidewalk maintenance, forty-seven thousand. So, is that true? Or what would the impact be?
So, I think in the roads maintenance, I'm, I'm not going to look through the, the binder to find the numbers, but as I said, last year, we, we had a very significant focus on that because of the extent of the work required. With, with each year, there's a bit of a balance as to how much money do you, do you spend on maintenance versus upgrades and whatnot? So, I think that's sort of the driver. As far as the, the exact numbers, I'm not sure if Mr. Van Buren or Mr. Wells would like to make a, make a comment on, on that, on that level of detail.
It's just page nineteen.
Mr. Wells.
Through you, your worship. Couple of springs ago, after the, the worst we had, we did commit significant dollars to try to fix some of the worst sections of the roads that we had, and that was very successful and helped us out a lot. And it also, it not only repaired the roads, but it, it reduced our maintenance costs because we didn't have to keep going back to those sections throughout the year to try to hold them together. We carried out a similar project this year, again, in conjunction with engineering on a bit smaller, smaller scale, and we, again, we addressed the, sort of, the worst first. So, each time we did that, it, it tended to reduce partially our, our ongoing maintenance costs. So, I think that's translated into some slight reductions in those operating costs for us by investing in the capital, more capital repairs.
Okay, thank you. If there's any way that councillors can provide input into the streets? I know I emailed Mark Campbell about Carnaby and Lancaster Drive, but see, two years ago, we were able to provide, to provide some input, and this year, it just happened. And then when I asked about Lancaster Drive, it's like, oh, we already determined our list. So, if we could give any feedback as a district, that would be really helpful. My second question is about the tree planting. So, thanks for letting us know that a report will be coming in the new year at some point. Where is the tree planting as far as a program? Is that beautification or is that park space? Do you know what category that's in?
Through you, Mr. Worship. There's actually a, a program in the budget for tree planting. That program covers our, what we call our annual tree planting program. Typically, I think we plant upwards of two hundred trees under that program a year. What we've done a couple of times in the last couple of years is we, we've taken on additional planting projects. There was one along Taylor Kid that we did a significant planting there. We're doing some, in some of the other parks. And as a part of our ongoing Emerald Ash Bore Program, we're replacing at a minimum of one per one for all the trees that we take out. So, our, our actual tree planting has increased significantly. Some of that is to compensate for the Emerald Ash Bore Program.
Thank you. And my last question is about the litter-free Kingston. And so, I know the importance of the downtown, I think we all do here, but it's more than just the downtown. So, for instance, in the West End, it seems that there's a lot of litter being produced by our students. So, the students en route to Holy Cross, the students en route to Bay Ridge Secondary School. And during, like, last year at this time, just coming out of the election, when we were at door to door, I had three people asking for if we could have a garbage can here, and they live right across from Bay Ridge Secondary School. Another person, all the kids walking to Holy Cross, can we have a garbage can? And someone else asked for, can we just have one more garbage can in this park? And when I forwarded it to customer service, then to Public Works, we were told that we've maximized out the number of garbage cans in the city. I definitely realize that there's a cost to having a garbage can because then every week, a truck has to come and empty the garbage can. But do you think with this litter-free objective, that we could try, if I could put the request in again, and that there's room in the budget, that we could maybe have a few more garbage cans across the city?
So, there, there are, it is a capital expenditure, and as with everything else, there's a limited number. But, yeah, I think that's a request that could be made. And, and even if it's not something that we could do for this year, it's something that I, that we could, we could look forward to because with all of this, I mean, there are planning cycles, and if there are areas that we need to be doing something like that, again, to support the initiative council, I think that's, that that would be fair to, to, to let us know where the, the requirements are. If I could just go back to, Mr. Hunt pointed out that I improperly If I could just go back to, Mr. Hunt pointed out that I improperly answered your one question. So the dollars in here for the sidewalk and street repairs are strictly in operating. I was actually referring back to the capital, which, if you go back to the capital budgets and look, you can see that, but today's numbers are strictly operating, and Damon answered that question properly.
Thank you, yeah. For sidewalks, for maintenance, I just wondered what the impacts will be if we, you know, reduce it by 20,000 to our residents in Kingston. So I, yeah, I guess that's just the snow clearing and fixing. I don't know. That's why I was asking the question.
Through you, your worship. We have had a fairly intensive sidewalk maintenance and repair program underway, particularly with respect to trips and falls over the last probably six or seven years now. We feel we're seeing a decrease in those particular liabilities. The type of equipment we're using to do that, it's less intrusive, it shaves the trip ledges off, we can do more with a given amount of resources than we were by excavating and reporing and doing that. So again, that initiative in not only reducing our trip hazards, but it also has reduced the amount of sidewalk repairs that we need to undertake. So we're, in trying to stay within our budget limits for our requests per year, we're looking at all the different ways where we can see savings to reduce that operating budget, to try to come in under that 2.5%.
Next on my list is Councilor Camden.
Thank you. I guess I just would like to hear your comments on a comment I'm about to make, and that is, the goal of intensification that council has, I think the old way of building cities was if you had to create, say, 200 residential units, you'd find a forest and bulldoze it and build roads and sidewalks and lights and all these things. The new way to do it seems as though we're taking tiny parcels and putting those 200 units on one small parcel. So now we're having to build less roads, we're sanding less roads, we're plowing less roads, we're creating less lights for those roads, and all these different things. As these things come through the pipeline, how, is it going to have a very significant effect on Public Works? Because I'm thinking it's going to allow you to work more freely and effectively with having a huge amount of people on a small parcel of land versus creating urban sprawl.
So from a Public Works perspective, I would say it's a positive type of development. You know, if you look at from, you know, snow plowing, roadways or sidewalks, then yeah, it's a much more condensed area. You don't necessarily need the resources or the time to do that. Also, you know, from a general road and sidewalk repair, I would say the same thing. If you look at things such as solid waste, you know, there's the same amount of garbage to pick up in a smaller area as in a bigger area. Now, there are some time savings and whatnot, obviously, and then with some of the multi-residential, you get into some different solutions and whatnot. But, you know, generally, I would say it's positive in that less resources and less work when you look at intensification. Now, if I was to answer that from a utilities perspective, I would say the same thing, although there are different drivers, and I think we've had some conversations about the impact on sewers and water. It's still probably easier, but maybe a little more taxing than from a road perspective.
Thank you. Councilor Neal.
Thank you. And I was happy to hear that, because I know we did some capital investment in more winter control management plows and such, but I had heard last year that, yes, we've got more equipment, but we don't have enough operators. And so I'm happy to hear that there's been some increase there. Is there also an opportunity, or do you regularly do cross-training to allow for those extraordinary winter control occasions to be able to have more people so that all the machinery can be pushing snow at the same time?
I'm going to let Mr. Wells answer this.
Through you, your worship. So in Public Works, we have forestry division with arborists, we have a horticultural division with horticulturists, we have a, we now have the sign crew under our purview, so we have sign installers, staff. None of those staff used to fully participate in winter control from an operator perspective. Starting a couple of years ago, we, as part of our annual winter control training, we trained up all those forestry staff, the horticultural staff, and the sign crew on sidewalk plows. Sidewalk plow is fairly straightforward, but still takes training. So we trained those staff up on that, those pieces of equipment, so that in those occasions when we did require extra bodies, we had more options to utilize than we currently did before. So to answer your question, yes, we are cross-training some of those staff who hadn't participated that way before.
Great, thank you. My other question regards tree planting, and I know at EITP, on various occasions over the last few years, you've heard me say this, I think our staff do a wonderful job and probably have been working, I'm sure, at capacity as far as tree planting goes, but our priority of greening the city and the ash bore crisis that we're faced with, is there an opportunity to do more, to do more planting out of capital? And is there more opportunity for us to do some of that through outside contracts or RFPs rather than trying to do it all in-house, most of it in-house?
See you, Hunt.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to maybe offer this. Mr. Keach indicated that there would be further information brought back to council on that. We don't have all of our plans done. What Mr. Wells has been speaking about is primarily the tree planting programs that are currently in existence and that which are planned under the normal course. What we think we might be able to proceed with is capitalizing on some programs that maybe relate to things through the Ministry of Natural Resources, or perhaps even introducing a program where we could get donations and contributions. Members of the community who wish to participate as donors, get charitable receipts to increase the funding, as well as allocate some other municipal funds that we may have into a program will move us on the path. It may be summer employment. At this point in time, we're not sure exactly what the program looks like, but in the next few months, we will need to council to get some advice and see if we can create a path forward to make progress on that particular initiative.
Thank you. And my last issue, I really appreciate the commitment we've made for downtown cleanup and that. And I just want to give a plug to the person who operates the sidewalk sweep, the French sidewalk sweeper, because he does indeed go from the traffic circle to the foot of Princess Street, and he does the side streets, and he faithfully, a couple of times a week, does the cycle paths on Princess Street. The only thing I'd say as an English teacher is perhaps you could that so that it was small D, downtown business, downtown and midtown business district, because I think that more accurately reflects the money that's being invested. And I applaud that program.
Thank you.
And if it's any consolation, Farmer's Almanac, that's never wrong, says we're going to have a really light winter.
Councilor McLaren.
Thank you. This is just a quick clarification question. Did I hear you say, Director Wells, that we spent capital dollars and it reduced our operating budget, or reduced our operating costs?
Through you, your worship. So when we initiated that spring maintenance initiative a couple of springs ago, we had just gone through a very severe winter, the worst winter in decades perhaps, and we're already starting to deteriorate, took a very severe beating with intensified freeze-thaw cycles. We were over them lots more with plows, so anything that was loose, helping to get it torn up. So we had a huge amount, or a lot of that, really were almost beyond maintenance. So for us to try to maintain some of those areas, we'd have to go back continually and try to patch them and try to patch them. So the intent of the program was to look at those very worst areas and make more permanent repairs. Some of them were only half, the one lane of the road or short sections. But in making those repairs, what we really did was not only provided better driving service, but we also reduced staff and equipment and material time in having to go back on a regular basis to maintain those. So by investing in those capital dollars in those really severe areas, we reduced our operating costs on a go-forward basis, gave us a little bit of a breathing room. In the same way that if you take a section of road, or two blocks, or a kilometer, that's in very poor condition, and you rebuild that whole road, then Public Works doesn't have to go back and try to patch it on an ongoing basis. So by investing in capital, you can reduce your operating costs, which is you have to balance where your capital dollars go and what you can afford for operating.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor George.
Thank you, your worship. Just in quick comment in regards to cleanliness of the city and such, I just hope staff don't forget that I think better than half the population of the city lives in the West End, and we have issues there as well, so we need to keep that in the back of our minds, so it's not all about downtown. The other question I wanted to ask, this is in regards to the snow removal budget, and I mean, it's nice to see that we're hiring some additional staffing in order to deal with some of the issues that we've had over the last couple of winters. One of the concerns I have, and I don't know, what was the increase in the snow removal budget for this year, Mr. Keach? I don't know if you can get that slide up again or not, whether the system's down there, but I know it was up there earlier, I thought there was a percentage of increase, but maybe it's just under Public Works.
It's not down to that level of detail.
That level, yeah. Okay. I guess one of the concerns I have is, I don't know if this is truly related to the budget, or whether it's related more to the snow removal policy that a previous council put in place, but one of the things that I have had, I don't want to say it's something that I've witnessed over the last couple of winters, and last winter more so with the new district alignment and the lack of service that some of the residential areas were receiving. And I know that on a number of occasions, I was either speaking with yourself, or Mr. Wells, or whomever I could get in touch with, and I take the time to get out and drive around, meet with the residents, have a look for myself, talk with some of the drivers, and it just seems to me that there's some issues related directly to cost, I would think, and it's potentially overtime costs, if it's taking us longer to get in and do some of the servicing that maybe is, you know, that's identified in our policy that we have currently in place. But what troubles me is if those are costs related to the fact that at certain times, as I witnessed last year, on more than one occasion, had the chance to talk with some drivers, we're running plows up and down bare roads under instruction when we have residential streets that haven't seen a plow yet. And I'm just wondering, is that having a negative effect on our budget potential cost increases because we're spending too much time in an area when we should be moving on? And I'm just wondering, how does that all play out? I know in my business, I have to look at the time related to doing a job, and, you know, at what time do you move on, and so on. And, you know, I had drivers commenting to me last year when I would stop, and, you know, they'd have a break, and this happened on more than one occasion, and I want to know, why are you running up and down a bare street? And they're told, they're telling me, well, that's what I'm instructed to do, meanwhile, I'm getting the calls from the residents in plans, in subdivisions, who haven't seen a plow in hours. And I'm just wondering, that's obviously got to have a negative cost to us and the tax base, so I'm just wondering, how do we fix that? And has an additional cost been identified to that problem that I've had, you know, the opportunity to witness now for two winters of excessive snow?
So we, so if what you're saying, we're basically running plows where we don't need to, when there's still areas of the city that haven't been plowed?
Yeah, I think it's a problem when you see the sparks coming off the runners on the blades. That tells me there's no need to be plowing that road.
So then I would say that's not something that we should be doing, and we need to be focusing on where we need to be doing this. And I think if that is happening, that's maybe an offline discussion that we need to, we need to have the follow-up on that, and Damon and I would be interested in that, yes.
Yeah, and I think that that obviously has a cost effect on the operational budget, because if you're looking at, and we all get the notices sent around to us usually from communications as to what's happening, additional staff are being brought in, blah, 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 that's obviously got an additional cost attached to it that really shouldn't be there.
Yeah, it could have, yes.
It's just something that I think, whether now is the appropriate time to get that message out, we need to deal with that, because it is a burden to the taxpayer when this is happening continually.
Yeah, that's, I think that's maybe a bit of an offline discussion we need to have to get to, because I agree that should not be happening.
Okay, thanks.
Any questions? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have no communications noted, so we will, I'll ask for a motion to recess until tomorrow night at 6:00. Moved by Councilor Boome, seconded by Councilor Hutchinson. Councilor Neal, can you come and vote so that we can recess? And that carries, we will see you tomorrow 6:00.